Welcome to City Council. Roger, if you could lead us up please.
Thank you Deputy Lord Provost. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council which is being held remotely and in a hybrid format in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act two thousand and three. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting which is being livestreamed. By participating in the meeting, you are consenting to being filmed and recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until muted back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? If you are to be the next speaker, please allow a pause after the last speaker has muted their microphone. Please then press the right-hand button on your console to activate your microphone. If you are joining the meetings remotely, please start the meetings with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera to see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is. The convener will then invite you to speak. Please do not use the hands-up function or intervene in any other way. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there's been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we're operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the council and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the provisions of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the usual way. Does any member have any queries regarding these procedures? There are no queries Deputy Lord Provost, so I'll now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I was indicated I'll now take a roll call for the minute. I would ask if members would confirm they were present when I called their names. Proceed apologies from Lord Provost Campbell, councillor Anderson.
Present, thank you.
Councillor Black.
Present.
Deputy Lord Provost Cordell.
Present.
Lee Dawson.
Oh, present.
Councillor Nakla.
Apologies.
Thank you for the apologies. Councillor Flynn.
Present.
Councillor Hunter.
Present.
Councillor Lynn.
Present.
Councillor Mills.
Present.
Ailie Roberts. Mark Ailie Roberts is absent. Councillor Rome.
Present.
Ailie Source.
Present.
Councillor Short.
Here.
Councillor Smith.
I'm here.
Councillor Tolland.
How are you? Present.
Ailie Keenan.
Present.
Councillor Cookshack.
Present.
Councillor Finnegan. Councillor McKeer.
Present.
Councillor McCarron.
Present.
Councillor Scullen.
Present.
Councillor Shears.
Present.
Ailie Wright.
Present.
Ailie McPherson.
A good evening, present.
Councillor Coleman.
Good evening.
Councillor Creighton.
I'm here.
Councillor Duncan.
Here.
Ailie Scott.
Here.
That concludes the roll call.
Deputy Lord Provost, members of the council. Item two general business, declaration of poll Ward one Strathmartin. It is reported for information and record purposes that following the counting of votes on third October twenty twenty four, the under-noted member has been declared to have been duly elected to serve as a councillor for Ward one Strathmartin. Jimmy Black, Scottish National Party SNP, elected at stage six, the turnout was twenty-two point three percent. Two, declaration of poll Ward two Lochie. It is reported for information and record purposes that following the counting of votes on third October twenty twenty four, the under-noted member has been declared to have been duly elected to serve as a councillor for Ward two Lochie. Lee Mills, Scottish National Party SNP, elected at stage six, the turnout was twenty-one point four percent. Thank you Roger. I see councillor Flynn would like to make a comment.
Yeah, thank you Deputy Lord Provost. Just to say welcome back to councillor Black who's been away for a number of years and I hope your contributions to the chamber will be most welcome on behalf of the party and also to our newest elected member councillor Mills. Again, welcome to the chamber and I'm sure again your contributions will be welcomed. But I'd also like to thank the voters in both Strathmartin and Lochie for the recognition of the work we have done within the city and what we plan to do going forward and I'm sure they've got two very good councillors to represent you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further comments so Roger. Thank you Deputy Lord Provost. Item three appointments. On a reference to item two above, the city council's instructions are requested regarding the appointments listed on the agenda. I see councillor Dawson would like to come in.
Many thanks Deputy Lord Provost. Just with regards to the appointments, I believe committee services have the slate which can be sent round for that.
Can you let people digest that and I... Ailie McPherson, you have a point of order.
Yeah, I note that from this slate that appears that we're appointing people to particular committees where there is an existing convener but there's been no notification of that existing convener actually having resigned. So let me give you an example. I see that for example, the neighbourhood regeneration housing and estate management committee, the existing appointee is councillor Flynn. There's been no notification to the city councils that councillor Flynn has resigned from that post but another nominee councillor Cordell, deputy lord provost Cordell rather, has been nominated. Surely we should have had a notification of resignations if the person being nominated is different than the current post holder.
Thank you Ailie McPherson. Roger, are you able to clarify the legal position now, please? Thank you very much Deputy Lord Provost. It has always been the council's custom and practice to require recognitions for appointments to outside bodies but appointments to convenerships, deputy convenerships and other roles as part of a slate has always simply been dealt with without the necessity for resignation. In some cases, of course, it's been caused by an election having been held.
Could I come back on that please?
You can.
Yeah, I've already raised with Mr. Many the issue of the way in which we appoint or rather do not appoint the leader of the administration and chair of the city governance committee. And I would certainly just make clear in advance that when the changes to standing orders come forward, it will certainly be my group's view that we should put this on a more proper footing. In other words, that you don't appoint where you've not had a resignation and that the council appoints the convener of city governance and the leader of the administration. I think it's just simply common sense but as I say, I'll leave that for another day and allow you to proceed from here Deputy Lord Provost.
Thank you Ailie McPherson in clarifying my tensions as well. And with that then, is that agreed? That is the business of... Deputy Lord Provost, there's one item to consider. Apologies, thank you Roger. Item four, outside bodies. Thank you Deputy Lord Provost. Item four, outside bodies. leisure culture Dundee. It is reported that councillor Short has intimated a resignation from leisure culture and the city council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy. Councillor Dawson.
Thanks Deputy Lord Provost.
Item two, Taktran. It is reported that councillor Flynn has intimated his resignation from Taktran and the city council's instructions are sought with regard to the filling of this vacancy. Councillor Dawson.
Deputy Lord Provost Cordell please.
Item three, Dovetail. It is reported that councillor Flynn has intimated his resignation from Dovetail and the city council's instructions are sought with regard to the filling of this vacancy. Councillor Dawson.
Councillor Black.
Item four, Dundee Partnership. It is reported that former councillor Alexander resigned from Dundee Partnership Management Group, Dundee Partnership sorry, and Dundee Partnership Management Group and the city council's instructions are sought with regard to the filling of these vacancies. Councillor Dawson.
Thanks Deputy Lord Provost. Mark Flynn for both please.
Okay. Item six, NHS T side board. It is reported that former councillor Alexander resigned from NHS T side board and the city council's instructions are sought with regard to the filling of this vacancy. Councillor Dawson.
Again, Mark Flynn please.
Item seven, T cities region joint committee. It is reported that former councillor Alexander resigned from the T cities region joint committee and the city council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy. Councillor Dawson.
And again councillor Flynn please.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, that is the business of city council. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome children, families and communities. Arlene, can I just pass to yourself?
Thanks convener. I'll take a roll call for the external members of the committee. Mrs. McBean.
I'm here.
Mrs. Little.
I'm here.
Mr. Gibson.
Present.
Ms. Barclay.
Present.
Mrs. Javid. Mark is absent. And Mr. Anderson McGinnis. That includes a roll call convener.
Okay, thank you. Can I just actually start the first item on the agenda please?
Thank you. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Not seen any indicating, so no declarations.
And that takes us on to item two, consultation on the closure of St Pius Roman Catholic Primary School and Nursery and this is for approval.
Okay, councillor Duncan, I see you've got a question.
Yeah, thanks convener. Actually, it's two questions and if you don't mind, can I ask them one at a time?
Absolutely, just whether you want to do it.
Yeah, just to avoid confusing everybody. So it's just really the consultation in question, certainly from my perspective, was came as something of a bolt from the blue. And you know, I think that the loss of the school in question would be quite keenly felt certainly in my wards and possibly elsewhere in the east of the city. I think that given that the denominational school catchment areas are already very large, the closure of St Pius would make St Francis catchment area actually huge. So the first of the questions would be on page fifteen of the substantive page numbering and within the draft proposal paper, it indicates work will be required to consider the most appropriate travel options to support individual children access their educational provision. Does the department accept that there are real challenges for parents and carers who live some distance away from St Francis? E.g. for example, in my wards, the eastern part of Barn Hill and those parents may well wish their children to keep attending a denominational school. So the transport would be a real challenge as far as getting up.
Okay, I'll pass to Mrs. May in the first hand. First part, we might want to bring other officers in.
Thank you convener and thank you for the question and yes, this is the exactly the kind of information and detail we would wish to glean from the consultation if this was proposed tonight and accepted. So we would you'll see from that information there around the travel to the school that ninety percent of the children who currently live in the St Pius area would still be within the two miles distance which is our guidance for providing transport to a school if we designate it as the child's catchment school. So just now, there's ninety percent of the children who could get themselves to St Francis Primary School under two miles. But as I say, part of the consultation, if it's approved this evening, would be to get details of information about individual children and families and then we would address that through our transport policy as it stands just now. Thank you.
Councillor Duncan, I'll pass by yourself. Your second question?
Yeah, thanks Mrs. May for that explanation and obviously the ten percent will be concerned at the moment, I should think. My second question really is that this proposal, it comes as something of a standalone proposal. Can officers give assurance about the overall strategy for the school estate across Dundee? Basically, is the department looking at any other aspects of the school estates with a view to further contracting it?
Well, as you'll be aware, I bring Mrs. May in a second, but as you're aware, councillor Duncan, we do bring our school estate strategy every year and that will come later on in the school year and that will update the committee at that point about the state of play with other schools but Mrs. May, do you want to add to that?
Probably not. I mean, I think you've more or less answered. We do have the school state as we turn the learning estate as we refer to it and all of our properties across the city under review on a regular basis. We work very closely with our property colleagues and city development to take into account all of the aspects of the property that we need to consider in terms of age, maintenance, the condition, suitability and we bring that report to you annually. So yeah, we would continue to do that and St Pius has surfaced in that review as an area that we'd want to explore further through a consultation. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Duncan, you happy with that?
Yeah, I mean, obviously we'll hear the details in due course but I think anything that helps remove any sort of uncertainty hanging over the school communities would be, you know, well received.
Okay, no, thank you. Councillor McKeer, I see you have a question.
Thank you. My question also relates to page fifteen, well pages fifteen and sixteen of the bundle. The draft proposal lists almost a full page of what are called educational benefits of closure on pages fifteen and sixteen. There's no corresponding list however of any adverse impacts associated with closing a local school and moving and moving children out of their local area, or of separating nursery and primary provision. I'd be really to believe that the closure of St Pius will have nothing but positive impacts on the children and families affected. A more balanced approach should surely have included a list of the likely social and educational disadvantages of a closure for elected members to consider. And I note with interest also on page nine of the bundle that council officers have discussed with church representatives what are called the potential benefits of this closure. Again, no mention of potential disadvantages. Can officers give a flavour of the reaction of the church representatives, please?
Mrs May, do you want to respond to that?
Thank you, yes, so this is very much a statutory process when we look to close a school or merge schools. So the style of that particular document around consultation is actually directed by Education Scotland to us, and so hence the layout and the headings and the aspects that we look at. And so, yeah, absolutely, hear what you're saying councillor McHugh, and we don't list the negative impacts, but this is how we present such a consultation paper. So yes, we have one of the church reps here, we've met with Mrs Theresa Little, who is our R C church rep, who's part of a committee, we also met with the vicar of Episcopal, Canon Tom Shields, who is also the clergy church rep, if you like, from the diocese of Dunkeld. So we've had a meeting to talk through the proposal and how it's come about and so on. And it was a very positive meeting in that the church are obviously going to support the church community, and there's a level of honesty there, of course, and I'm sure Mrs Little might want to add to that, but a real commitment to work together with us if it's approved to go through tonight, and we will work together through the consultation and support the community.
Okay.
If you want to bring in.
No, thank you. As we choose, anything you want to respond in the background, I'll allow Mrs Little to come in if she wishes to speak of the church's position.
Yes, so what the answer to that is, that's the format that is handed down from the government.
Yeah, it's a statutory way we have to consult, so that's what we have to put into the consultation process, but Mrs May, does there's anything want to add to that? No. So I said essentially, what we're advised we have to do by Education Scotland, how we consult.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mrs Little, I don't know if you wish to comment to speak on the church's position, but I'll allow you to do that if you wish.
Yes, please. Obviously, the church's position is, we were really saddened to hear of the proposal concerning St Pius. The church are not in favour of closing any catholic schools and have real concerns for the learning community of St Pius. We will, of course, support the school, the parents and the community throughout this process. We're also concerned about the possible removal of catholic provision in this area and the impact it could have in the parish and in the community. Again, this would create a further geographical imbalance in the provision of catholic education across the city. And some of the concerns have been raised about travel and the distance, et cetera. We do understand the current climate with falling school rolls, not only in St Pius, but across the city, as well as the financial situation. And we want to work constructively with Dundee City Council and Children and Family Service on the overall vision and the strategies for moving forward in the vision of catholic schools.
Thank you for that, and certainly from my perspective, and, you know, happy to speak to, you know, Mrs May, but I would be certainly happy to have that discussion about what catholic education looks like going forward, and perhaps bring someone back to committee a future date, but more willing to have that conversation with yourself and the catholic churches to have that discussion, and any other appropriate persons at that time to have those conversations. Okay, Bailey Keenan, I see you have a amendment, but before I get to that, I just want to see that nobody else wishes to comment, any other questions or comments before we move to that? I'm not seeing any others wish to comment, so Bailey Keenan, happy for you to have the floor.
Well, I mean, initially I was obviously intending to hear what the catholic churches had to say about it, but having heard the catholic church representative say that the church is now particularly in favour of the closure of a school, then I would prefer that we either defer it, do have some more meaningful discussions with the church and bring them on board, or fill in that, then I would move the note, the report into further action.
Councillor Shears, I see you wish to second.
Thanks convener, I just support my second.
Okay, thank you. But again, I certainly understand your position. I think my view would be that that's what we do through the consultation process, and obviously this is only just about to consult, it's not a decision to actually close the school, that might come after the consultation. But I think, you know, going out and speaking to the parents, speaking to the community, speaking to the church, and then come back with the result of that consultation before we make a firm decision would certainly, I think, I would also make a meeting of your concerns. So I would not be minded to support your amendment at this point, and be very clear that what we're proposing tonight is just a consultation, it's not actually to close the school, that would come after the consultation process, and there may be a very much different discussion on the night, should the consultation come forward. I'll ring back in and say, okay. So my indication is to just go ahead with the motion as it stands. Do I, I will need a second, just to get somebody to second me. Councillor Smith has formally seconded. Does anybody else wish to comment before we go to the vote? Councillor Flynn?
Yeah, thanks convener, I think, well, it's just a consultation, it's not a decision on closure. And I think in section five of the report, it's quite clear that we have opportunities later to have that decision within the chamber itself, following the consultation, and the catholic church that take on board, what's just been said, and I think it's important, they will contribute to that consultation fully, I'm sure. See, I'm not, the bad one, sorry, thank goodness, and I think it's important this is noted, I think we really have to check that this is not just getting pushed through by any stretch, let's be clear, this is a straightforward mandatory formal consultation process, and I think it was for me guys that this anticipated to come back to the committee, so I'm quite supportive of your comments, convener, and we proceed with the committee report as is.
Just checking, anybody else wishes to comment at this stage? There's also, um, so with that, does anybody else wish to come in, can we just go to the vote, please?
Thanks convener, the motion, you know, seconded by councillor Smith as a part of the report. The amendment by Bailey Keenan, seconded by councillor Shears, is to defer. Convener. Councillor Anderson.
Motion.
Councillor Black.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Cardell. Bailey Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Flynn.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Councillor Mills.
Motion.
Councillor Roe.
Motion.
Bailey Source.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
Motion, please.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Councillor Tolland.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan. Councillor Cootcham. Amendment. Councillor Finnegan.
Amendment.
Councillor McHugh.
Amendment.
Councillor McIrvin.
Amendment.
Councillor Scullen.
Amendment.
Councillor Shears.
Amendment.
Bailey Wright.
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson.
The amendment.
Councillor Coleman.
The amendment.
Councillor Creighton.
The amendment.
Councillor Duncan.
Amendment.
Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
Mrs McBean.
I'll abstain.
Mrs Little.
Amendment.
Mr Gibson.
Abstain.
And Ms Barclay.
I'll abstain.
So that's thirteen for the motion and fourteen for the amendment, so the amendment is carried.
Okay, so the agreement is to defer this and to bring this back after, sorry, Mrs Little, to be back, so I apologise especially those who are who are aligned, so the decision is to defer, bring this back after consultation with the catholic church. So that is the position of the committee, okay, Arlene, can we move on to the next item on the agenda?
Thank you, that takes us on to item three, what matters to you, progress update, you're asked to agree the recommendations.
Okay, this is a really positive report, I understand there was a briefing for elected members last week, which I know some of you attended, Bailey McPherson.
Yeah, thanks convener, simply a comment to say, I thought the briefing was extremely interesting and informative, and it showed what can be achieved working with families in communities. I did make the point at the briefing, and I'll make it again tonight, and it's a specific reference to SO two on page twenty seven of the report, which talks about the scaling up of the project to cover other communities across the city. And that's very welcome. However, I'm very conscious of the fact that the funding runs only to twenty twenty six. And what I think we have to have some assurances on is that we don't have a sort of cliff edge in twenty twenty six, when all the good work is lost going forward in this world of diminishing resources. And I think it's really important that where we've got good projects, we've seen it so often, where we have good projects and the funding ends, and the good work ends at that time. And obviously, we want to ensure that what is being achieved is continued into the future as well as being rolled out in the meantime to other parts of the city. Thank you, convener.
No, thank you for that, Mrs May, do you want to give some reassurance to Bailey McPherson?
Thank you convener, and thanks to Billy McPherson, and thank you for your positive back on the briefing and indeed this great work. This is, we keep trying to emphasise it, sometimes it's really hard to capture, this is not projects, not an initiative, it's not an intervention, it's the shift in the way we work and the way we engage with communities. So as we work with our colleagues across all of the services involved here, and engage with local people, and ask them what really does matter to them in terms of designing services with them going forward, we see this as a new way of working. So yeah, we've got support just now in terms of the funding, the extra resource to roll this out and to scale it up. But we hope that one day that these additional partners won't be necessary, because that.
Bailey McPherson, are you happy with that response?
Um, this application. And that's my initial point about the post twenty twenty six, I do thank Mrs May for her reply.
Okay, thank you, councillor Cootcham, I see you've got your hand up, so I'll pass yourself.
And thank you. Just to say that I agree with Billy McPherson's, McPherson's comments on the briefing, and also I welcome the report. And it's obvious that, you know, this approach to be moved is to achieve the best outcomes for them, and that's by asking them, is really important. I note in section five of the report that there are plans to move this work into a fourth locality. Can you, can officers say more about the plans to extend to the other localities across the rest of Dundee? Thank you.
If so, please.
Thanks convener, and again, thank you for your comments and to question councillor Cootcham. Yes, in section five point two point four, you will see that the media part of our city, we're now ready to move into Coleside, and actually, hopefully, the oversight board that I chair will bring to me the plans in the meeting in February of the phasing across the rest of the city, across all wards. As they have to share with you, but we'll bring that to you when that's in the detail, thank you.
You happy with that, councillor Cootcham?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, councillor Short?
Thank you. And I just apologise to Glenn, because I've missed the briefing, and so I didn't get the opportunity to take part in that, but I'm aware of the project running around the city. And I just wanted to pause for a little moment to say thank you to Sir Tom and Lady Marion up from the Hunter Foundation. And we see them often in the city, they get involved in things, and actually, we're sitting here in the Kird Hall, but today's flampus are more involved in the day to day of everything. So just put a note that Sir Tom, Lady Marion, we salute you and thank you for providing this for those of us that we want to speak to in the city.
Okay, councillor Short, councillor Anderson?
Councillor Short, we got there first, I just wanted to thank the Hunter Fendey in need for the money to try out this new way of working. I know some people who've been developing this, so I got an informal briefing, and I was just going to see, I'm absolutely delighted that it's finally coming to Coleside. So we're really working with you on that, thank you.
Thank you for those comments, with that, I don't see anybody else which will come in, so is this agreed? Okay, Arlene?
Thanks convener, at this point, the external members of this committee will leave. And will take us on to item four, which is our promise twenty three to twenty six annual update, and you're asked to agree the recommendations.
Okay. Councillor Cootcham?
Thank you convener, and this is just to welcome this very positive report about the work of delivering our promise in Dundee for all care experienced children and young people. It's clear to see that we no longer have young people in secure care, and it's great to see that we have reduced the external residential care from forty three to eighteen young people. Can officers say a bit more about the plans for the eighteen young people who are still externally placed? Thank you.
Pass Mrs May in the first instance, but I don't know if you want to bring Mr Lloyd in.
Yeah, thanks convener, I think Glenn Lloyd would be best placed to answer this one, thank you.
Thank you convener, and thank you councillor Cootcham. And yes, we've gone from forty three to eighteen in external residential care, and there are plans in motion in relation to some, but not all, of those eighteen dependent upon age and stage and our local capacity to meet their needs, but certainly some of those will be coming back to the city even in the next few weeks, either to kinship care, to foster care, to one of our houses, or to supported accommodation. So there are plans in motion. At the same time, we're also preventing children and young people from going out into external residential care, and we should add perhaps as part of the report, that in the first six months last year, five went out, compared with the first six months of this year, two went out, so that overall strategy will remain in place.
Okay, are you happy with that response? Seeing you in the audience, so yes, yeah, okay, councillor Clayton?
Thank you convier, just a quick question, well, first a comment, it's excellent to see the progress being made and the achievements highlighted in five point one are certainly real achievements. It's clear that information at nine point two foster care numbers are still lagging quite far behind twenty twenty two levels. Are officers confident that the slight recovery from twenty three levels can be maintained? And can we have a further increase over time?
Again, Mr Lloyd, I think you're best placed to answer.
Again, thank you convener, and thank you for the question, councillor Clayton. And this is a national, as well as a local problem, and the number of approached foster carers, both internal with local authorities and external with other organisations, is reduced by sixteen percent in the last five years, so it is a challenge. The work with the lens, we believe, has led to some increase in Dundee. And I can confidently say that that will return us back to previous levels where we were five years ago, but as you can see from the report, we are also at the same time carrying a review of fees and allowances, and will bring proposals back to ask for approval, whatever the outcome of that is, but it is an ongoing national challenge. It's a challenge, we're unclear of the precise reasons. It started before the pandemic, it probably got worse during the pandemic, but certainly we're doing all we can to address it, including, as you can see through the actions described in the report.
Okay, you happy with that response, councillor Clayton?
Yes, thank you convier.
Okay, not seeing anybody else wish to comment, so with that, as the item agrees. Okay, okay, Arlene?
That takes us on to item five, community empowerment and locality planning, and this is for noting.
Okay, can I just see if anybody wants to make any comments at this stage? Billy McPherson.
Thanks indeed, Convenor. A couple of comments. First of all, I would say there's much positive in this report and I commend staff efforts and their delivery. And I do have a couple of comments, nothing that I haven't said before. But I think given that we're talking about local community planning partnerships, I want to reinforce my view. The chief executive is well aware departmental commitment across the council, it's not a one particular department, to ensuring that they are representatives from each whole community planning partners. And I'll continue saying that happens. The other point I would make, and I, thank you, Convenor. Thank you, Convenor.
Thank you, Billy McPherson. Mr Boyd, want to come in a second instance?
Thanks very much, Convenor, and thanks Billy McPherson for the question. In terms of officer representation, I did indicate to committee at the last time this was brought up, that I am undertaking a review just now of how we set up our. And also wider reputation, because I think the crucial point, we need sufficient and communities workers across the city. And we do really need that departmental commitment to LCP, the work of the local community planning groups across the city. So I welcome Boyle's review and I think pause comes forward as a result of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy McPherson. Quick question.
I want to ask about the progress on the local plans and in support of the British Ferry on page eighty four. And action five talks about investigating opportunities to develop a community hub. That's something we've been trying to achieve for many, many years. And currently in the council's capital plan in future years, there is a sum of money for an extension to provide a community hub. The council also holds donations that members of the public made when they bought bricks for the development of an extension. So I'd like to ask if there's any realistic chance that the extension will actually be realised and if so, how much scale for that?
Okay, Mr Boyle.
Thanks, Convenor, and thanks again, Billy Scott. In terms of that, as noted in page eighty four, it's part of the ferry action plan. That's a five year action plan. As soon as we're able to update members on that, we will do so. But it's certainly down there just now as an action.
Billy Scott, are you happy with that response?
I might pursue it further away from here with the finance offices as well.
That's absolutely fine. Councillor Anderson.
Thank you, Convenor. And I just wanted to congratulate the team, the community development team for the phenomenal amount of work they've done here, especially winning the award from APSE, that was great achievement. And just to also congratulate them on hitting the target and, you know, breaching the target for participatory budgeting involvement. And I think my understanding is we're now on the third round of the first Scottish Climate Fund involving PB. And I think there's been very high interest from organisations who are seeking funding through that fund. I wondered if any of the officers have an update on the level of interest in the third round of the fund.
Okay, again, Mr Boyle.
Thank you, Convenor. Thanks, councillor Anderson. I'll ask Mr McCrimmon if he can advise any further.
I'm going to ask Miss Daly if she can advise any further on that one. I'm not involved with the climate change fund specifically. Thanks.
Yeah, I can give you some information just now, but I will commit to finding the details and passing it on. We are currently at the stage of doing the initial assessments of applications that have come in to see if they are basically compliant. And I'm not aware of the figures off the top of my head, but I will get them to you that the numbers of applications exceeds the amount of money that we have to allocate. There's been significant interest in this round. But as I say, I will get the detail of that to you.
Okay, happy with that, councillor Anderson? Okay, with that, I don't see any else which will come in. So can this report be agreed? Okay, so thank you. And I think that's all the business for this committee. So thank you very much. Okay, welcome to the neighbourhood regeneration, housing and estate management committee. Arlene, could you lead us off please?
Thanks, Convenor. Item four, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
I see and hear no declarations of interest. Thank you, Arlene.
That takes us on to item two, empty home strategy. This is for approval.
Okay, before I open up to questions on this report, I just want to point out there is a typo on page twenty stroke eighteen of the report where one point two percent and the word two should be removed. So just to make everyone aware of that. And Bailey Keenan, oh, sorry, Billy McPherson, you first.
Okay, thanks, Convenor. On page sixteen, as one of the key commitments at four point one, it indicates consider the use of compulsory purchase orders for empty residential properties where appropriate. If you then go forward to the following page, page seventeen, at the very bottom of four point two, it reads legal or financial constraints, reluctance or inability to use compulsory purchase order due to costs involved in the purchase or legal resource not available to pursue cases. And I'm just basically wondering if officers can indicate me, in relation to the empty home strategy, have we ever used a CPO? It always strikes me that there is merit in it where judgment can be made that the capital receipt on resale can cover both the original purchase costs and any legal costs that the council has. And it may indeed be, in some cases, frankly, the only way of getting an unused but otherwise worthwhile property that could actually become a good family home, getting it back into positive use. So I was just really wondering, have we used CPOs at all? If so, how many? And is there an intention to try where appropriate to use them in the future?
Thank you, Billy McPherson. Tony, you looking to come in or not?
Okay, thank you, Convenor. Thanks really, Billy McPherson, for the question. I think the first point is around the fact that we mentioned compulsory purchase orders on the report as something we definitely want to pursue. So to provide that assurance, but equally, it was appropriate that within the report, we identified that that has its challenges. In terms of the most substantive question that Billy McPherson has put forward regarding if any of these have been used, if you could please allow us to go away and find out the information he's looking for and I revert back to him to go.
Are you okay with that, Billy McPherson?
Yeah, that's absolutely fine. I suspect the number will be nil or very small. But I will await to hear back from Mr Boyle. I think it might be just useful to share that with the whole committee as well.
Of course, thank you. Bailey Keenan.
I'm just wondering if the half employee or the half full time equivalent, probably somebody working seventeen and a half hours a week, is adequate, given that we have somewhere in the region of eight thousand on waiting lists looking for a home? Is there no more we could do here? Is there more resources that are required so as that we can try to bring some of these homes back in to live in accommodation for people? I know that in the Strathmartin ward, that there is a house that I know that's lay empty for a year. And just recently, the owner of that's decided to board it up. You know, that would suggest to me that they're looking to protect an asset and that asset should be used to house somebody. So, you know, have we got the correct amount of people or have we put the correct amount of effort in to bringing houses back? Or are we just looking to see that there's double the council tax and that will do fine at the meantime? But are we serious about making a difference?
Tony, thank you. Thanks, Convenor, but thanks, Bailey Keenan. And the report identifies, and Billy Keenan is correct, we've got zero point five of a full term equivalent on the on this particular strategy. I think what would be realistic with committee that we've got limitations in terms of what we can actually resource in terms of the wider challenges that go across the council and take on board the point that's being made. But we have also got to balance that with the other pressures we've got in terms of running our wider services.
Thank you. Tony, councillor Shears.
My apologies, Convenor, but through the question but forgot to hit Anna.
You can ask them again then. Councillor Anderson.
Thank you. And we just said, I was absolutely delighted to see this report as a result of us making that position a permanent post. So there has been progress on creating an empty homes officer and making that post permanent. I know that previously, a number of the officers were looking into the option of compulsory sales orders, which would be easier for us because we don't have to find the money to buy the properties, but we could compel the owner to do something about it. I just wondered if there had been any update on the progress in thinking on compulsory sales orders.
Thanks, Convenor. Thanks, councillor Anderson. Again, if you can allow me to find that information of presented by the committee.
Thank you. Tony, councillor Flynn.
Yeah, thank you, Convenor. Welcome to the chair. I'm sure you're going to enjoy this role. It's a very effective role and you have a very good team behind you. And just to say that this was long overdue, the empty home strategy. I'm really glad it's here because it highlights just one of the tools in the toolbox to address what Bailey Keenan's just mentioned about getting properties back into use. And I think it's really good that we can get officers to work with, whether it be owners or family members or because of whatever reason the property lies dormant, that we try and get these properties back into use either by themselves or another way, get them on the market. So we can actually see somebody living the properties. There's one very interesting point within the actual report itself on page fifteen with the private rental sector and the pressure that puts on housing within the city. And it's a local housing allowance, which is a very, very low number when it comes to the support when the requirements within the city itself. And it's maybe something that I would ask the Labour Party to maybe ask the hierarchy down below in Westminster to look into. Because the local housing allowance is a big issue within the city. It puts pressure on the private rental sector and those living in the private rental sector. And pushing pressure on them to be pushed out of the private rental sector and pushed into another housing issue and creating the housing issues that are within the city. So it's just something to be noted. And I think it's not all about getting double council tax. It's all about making sure we get properties back into use. So I welcome the report, Convenor, and the strategy before us. And I think it's long overdue. And thank you to the team for putting it together.
Thank you for those comments, councillor Flynn. With that, I see no further people looking for comments. So is that approved?
Indeed.
Thank you. Arlene.
Item three, regulation of social housing in Scotland, annual assurance statement. This is for approval.
Okay, again, I will just open that one up to comments or questions. Okay, Bailey Keenan, you were first.
Thanks, Convenor. The report on page twenty seven mentions RAC. And I'm just wondering if Dundee City Council is in a position to say how much the repair is going to cost? And is that whether they've any plans to compensate owner occupiers or owners in any way? I know that some councils have done so. You know, I think maybe the offer that people got, they were never happy with. But what's Dundee City Council's vision on dealing with that?
Tony, I'll let you in first.
Thanks, Convenor. Thanks, Bailey Keenan. Committee will be aware that we've previously brought up the issue of RAC and identified that they've got an ongoing monitoring programme in place. In terms of the wider question around resourcing and providing compensation, that issue has not been looked at. It's certainly something we could review, but at this moment in time, we don't have that take forward, Olga.
Bailey Keenan, at four point one eight, we describe how we're taking forward pilot work on five different properties. Sorry, there seems to be some sign to come through.
As I said, at paragraph four point one eight, we outline the current position as we know it in relation to RAC. I'd just like to draw your attention to the fact that we are carrying out a pilot project in relation to five properties. And that's currently at design stage. And the cost remediation that will be used to inform our plan. And as we said, we took the initial report through committee. We will then bring back a furthermore wide ranging report about what that tells us, what the likely costs are, what the future strategy is.
Okay, thank you, Olga, for that. I'm slightly curious.
Thank you. The annual assurance statement declares that Dundee City Council has met all its legal obligations associated with housing and homelessness services. However, that's not quite the whole picture. The report goes on to list areas where the council is in breach of its legal duties. Under the homeless person's unsuitable accommodation, this order was breached two hundred and twenty seven times. One thousand properties did not have a current electrical certificate. And one thousand two hundred and twenty two were completed beyond the five year anniversary. And four properties didn't have an annual gas safety check. And in addition, the Scottish Housing Regulator has identified the provision of temporary accommodation and outcomes for people who are homeless as areas worthy of additional scrutiny. So how can we be assured that the council has met its legal obligations when in these areas it appears they have not?
Tony, Olga.
Thank you. If I can start with the issue of homelessness to begin with. The statements that were quoted from the Scottish Housing Regulator, I think it's fair to say were made in relation to a large number of authorities, I think in total ten. And what was being recognised there was that there were systemic issues in relation to homelessness and which were to do with wider pressures, which were outlined in terms of growth and demographics and a whole range of other pressures relating to things like welfare reform and so on. So that is painting a picture to say that actually they recognise the council faced a number of pressures that were beyond the council's control to mitigate one hundred percent. And fair to say, we have absolutely kept our legal obligation to offer temporary accommodation to a hundred percent of people who apply to us, who require it. And that is certainly not the case right across Scotland. We have also made significant progress this year in rehousing homeless people as a result of the money that was made available by council in order to bring it back into use our own empty properties. We have relit over eight hundred properties, council properties this year. And approximately seventy five percent of them have gone to homeless households, leaving us in a position for the remainder of the year, we're in a potential position that we might not need to make use of bed and breakfast. So we've certainly made significant progress. The issues that we really, we raised. The issues that we raised in relation to gas were certainly the case that in twenty three, twenty four, we did fail on four occasions in terms of the gas safety. As soon as we found out about them, we rectified them. That is no longer the case. So we are in a position to say that we are currently meeting our legal obligation in relation to gas safety checks. The issue about unacceptable accommodation order, obviously, that is an issue we have as an ongoing problem. But the to reduce the number of empty homes has enabled us to really mitigate that going forward. It's maybe a tautology, but the unacceptable accommodation officer is a matter of statutory instrument rather than a primary legislation.
Thank you, Olga. And so, you okay with it?
So what you're saying to me is that the council has met all its despite the fact that the homeless person's unsuitable accommodation order was breached two hundred and twenty seven.
As I say, in the primary legislation would be our position.
Report says legal obligations.
Does it say legal or statutory? What did you find out? We are not trying to, you know, hide away from the fact that we have these breaches of unsuitable accommodation order. However, I think we are making significant progress in reducing.
Okay, thank you for that, Olga. And I see no one else wishing to answer the question. We could comment on that. So that approved. Thank you.
That takes us on to item four, Dundee City Housing Investment Plan twenty twenty five.
Thanks, convenor. On the, in the information on pages forty two and forty three, which gives the ship housing programme twenty five, twenty six, twenty six to twenty seven, and then from twenty seven to twenty nine, in other words, all the way up to twenty twenty nine. I see no mention of the project in relation to the building of flats two one nine to two four five Blackness Road. Now, we had a report to committee a little bit of time ago indicating that the council was pursuing this. And we'd bring back a further report on the success of moving forward on the procurement framework necessary to progress that. So I was rather surprised to see absolutely no mention of this project in the report at all. And I'm just really wondering if we approve this tonight or are we saying we're not going ahead with that project? Because I would be very concerned indeed if that were the case.
Yeah, Tony, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Keenan. Thank you, Billy, for asking the question. But that wasn't the intention, but we are, as you're aware, putting out a sourcing strategy for the Blackness flats. As soon as we're able to update that and provide the updated members in the next couple of days, we'll revise timeline for that tender.
Sorry, thanks for that. I get all that. What I don't get is why it's not in the ship as being presented tonight. There's no reason it shouldn't be, is there, Mr Boyle? Can we not just add it to the list? Given that it is actually a project that we are intending to progress with, subject to, as you say, the sourcing strategy report being, you know, the sourcing strategy being successful and we're then able to progress it. It just strikes me as an error, an omission, that it's not actually in the ship that we are being asked to approve tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. It's worth pointing out, I think, that we are submitting the ship at this point despite the fact that we don't actually have our funding levels. And we did discuss this with the officials at Scottish Government who requested it because the reality is we will have to come back to members once we do know what those funding levels are. At that point, we would anticipate we would also be closer to information round about the future of Blackness. So Appendix one shows things which are already in train and already funded. Appendix two shows those items which are approved to be in the pipeline. I suppose it's unfortunate that Blackness kind of falls between both those two at the moment. But it would certainly be our intention, once we get the resource plan and assumption, to be coming back to committee to show exactly how much money we have for funding of new built housing. And at that point, we would make it clear regarding.
I get all that. I understand that completely. But I would have thought it would have been appropriate that pipeline project going forward was actually included in the ship. I can't see any reason why not. I understand all the point that you're making regarding funding and what is going to be possible. I understand that. But I just view it as an omission that that particular project has been omitted from that. Because on the assumption, and I think it's next month, I think we were told, that this follow up report on the outcome of the sourcing strategy would come back to committee. Now, on the assumption that that is positive, then quite clearly, it is a pipeline project. So there is absolutely no, absolutely none at all. So I'm just, you know, I'm just at a loss as to why it's not been included.
Thank you for those comments. Billy McPherson, and I know Tony and Olga will have taken them on board. Councillor McHugh, please.
Thank you. And my question actually touches on what you've just been discussing about levels of funding. At four point one, the plan lists funding developments for twenty five, twenty six of up to fourteen point eight million. This is despite the Scottish Government's guidance suggesting a carry forward for this period of ten point nine million. I wonder why we are allocating four million pounds more in this plan than the amount suggested by the Scottish Government. This overestimate of what we can deliver realistically might make the numbers in the plan look more impressive, but considering the current economic climate and clear guidance from the Scottish Government can only result in a failure to deliver on the plan's promise. And I have to ask, why would we set ourselves up to fail like that?
Tony, please. Or Olga?
Thank you for the question. I think if you refer back to previous reports regarding the ship, it is common practice and right across Scottish local authority as well to make provision in excess of the allocated amount. That's because projects slip and sometimes additional funding becomes available. It also reflects the fact that currently we do not know what the level of funding is. So we do make extra revision and the basis that when we put into Scottish Government, what we're trying to see is we have this level of projects which could attract funding. Should you give it to us, we could spend it and we could increase the level of affordable housing. So it's not just a delivery plan, it's also in a sense saying this is the level of funding we would seek. And that's been the pattern in ships, if you would like to go back and see them over recent years.
Thank you, Olga. Bailey Keenan, you are next.
I was pleased to read in the paper that the houses in Derby Street, the top of the hill, had been completed. And they probably were on this report or ones similar to for, I don't know, seven, maybe eight year. An absolutely ridiculous amount of time for them to be completing these houses. But I now notice that Ellen Gowan Drive appears to be there. So can I ask how Ellen Gowan Drive's been, you know, the focus for so many years and how it's never got to completion? And what are the ones that are outstanding? Is it social rented or is it mid-market rents that were looking to be completed by December twenty four?
Okay, Olga, you're coming in on that one? Or is it Louise? I suppose it was too easy. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Bailey Keenan. And in terms of the latter part, what we'd look to do is to come back in terms of what the split is in the completions by December and be able to confirm that with members. And for those who know Ellen Gowan, you'll know it's a particularly challenging site. And a lot of asbestos through the properties that were given previously. And there's been a phased plan in terms of that development. And if there's further detail, specific detail around the times, I can pick that up with Hillcrest and come back to you and other members.
Thanks very much for that. It'd be good to have it and understand that. I would have thought that when it comes to asbestos, so they cleared that right at the outset before anyone else got involved in the site. But it just seems like it's been on this report forever. And I kind of wonder whether when it comes to social rented houses, we're not getting the best deal in construction in the city, given that many other privately owned estates are happening much quicker than our social rented houses are. And if it's building inflation, then we'll be getting the brunt of it, especially when the leg of the top of the hill took seven year or eight year to complete.
Thank you for that, Bailey McPherson. Sorry, Bailey Keenan. Bailey McPherson, I see you have an amendment?
Yeah, I didn't think it was actually going to be necessary tonight because I just viewed the omission of two one nine to two four five Blackness Road as frankly an error, error, because that's exactly what, of course, it is. So therefore, I'm proposing that we accept the ship as has been presented tonight, subject with the addition of two one nine to two four five Blackness Roads project being included in the tables. And I leave it to officers to insert it where they wish in the tables on pages forty two and forty three. Now, I would hope that's not a controversial thing. There has been a commitment, because we all agreed it just a matter of weeks ago, that we were bringing back the sourcing strategy. So it is a live project in that respect. So I would hope that committee could simply just agree to that. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that, Bailey McPherson. And before I comment, do you have a point of order, Bailey Saws?
Well, it's entirely up to yourself, as convenor, but my understanding was that members had to submit amendments in advance and not just do these casually on the evening. The only person's had the report for as long as anyone else has. He's had ample opportunity to speak to officers, find out about this, and instead seems to just pop up in the evening and what to have his fifteen seconds of fame, is it?
Well, maybe just before we go back to Bailey McPherson's amendment, maybe Mr Many, could you just clarify the position with submitting amendments?
Thank you, convenor. I think the first point that should be made to all members of the committee is that all matters of order, competency and relevancy are matters for the convenor whose decision is final and not open for question or discussion. The general rule is that all motions and amendments should be submitted to me by midday on the day of the meeting. However, there is an exception standing orders for those amendments which are unanticipated at the beginning of the meeting. And if Fraser McPherson's amendment was unanticipated, then standing orders would allow that to be moved, subject to your view, convenor.
Thank you for that, Mr Many. Perhaps that is a timely reminder of maybe how we should be conducting business going forward. But as Mr Many has suggested, it does rest with the chair. And I have no real objection with accepting Bailey McPherson's amendment, as long as Tony and Olga are fine with that. Yep. So we will accept that, Bailey McPherson, and it will be reflected moving forward. Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm perfectly happy with that. It shouldn't be an issue of controversy. And of course, Mr Many is, as he always is, absolutely correct. This was completely unanticipated. I just thought it would be sort of accepted, it was missing in error and would be added. We have no disagreement, I think, across the chamber that we want to see this project go forward. So I'm very grateful for your response, convenor, and grateful to the officers for their feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, is that approved? Thank you. Arlene, please.
That takes us on to item five, Rapid Rehousing Transition Plan Review of Year Five. This is for noting.
Again, we will just go into questions. It's the councillor Scullan who has the first question.
I've got two questions, if that's okay.
Okay.
Okay, so my first question is in five point four, we want to talk about mitigations. It says that one of them would be to increase the number of temporary furnished flats that can be flipped to permanent accommodation by relaxing the criteria required to qualify for this. So I just wondered what was the criteria to flipping them and what does it mean by relaxing that criteria?
Thank you. Louise, please.
Yeah, thank you for the question. And what we'll be able to do is share the criteria with members after the committee have that satisfied.
Thank you. And your other question, councillor Scullan?
Yep. While reading through the report and the additional papers, I've noticed that it says a couple of times it mentions that the Scottish Parliament declared a national housing emergency in May. So seeing as we as a group have tried to bring this forward twice now, and it's mentioned in this report, is the administration willing to state today and have admitted that there is in fact a housing emergency in the city?
Well, as you brought the point out, the Labour Party asked for a national housing emergency to be declared. That's what we got. They didn't ask for thirty two local housing emergencies. So we are working as well as we can with the Scottish Government. My predecessor has had numerous conversations and they will continue to be ongoing. And you see the reports in front of you tonight that there's a whole range of things we're doing to help people in the city. And that is the current position. Thank you. Councillor Craig.
Thank you, convenor. Just a question. Around four point eight, four point eight point one, that indicates that B and B accommodation continues to be used, but doesn't really quantify it. However, the earlier report, we've already considered as item three states the council breached the homeless person's unsuitable accommodation order during twenty three, twenty four in relation to the length of stay in bed and breakfast accommodation and the results in pressure on temporary accommodation. And the pressure on temporary accommodation on the two hundred and twenty seven occasions. Can officers give some assurances that progress is actually being made and to address these numbers as they don't read very well?
Thank you. Tony?
Thanks, convenor. Thanks, councillor Craig. Yeah, we're able to provide that assurance, but we'll provide an update to you in due course.
Thank you for that. Councillor Shears.
Thanks, convenor. And in five point four, it talks about trial the use of small scale shared temporary accommodation in two bedroom flats. I was wondering if we can get some more detail on this specifically. Would that be something like a last resort measure? And how would people be paired up for the shared accommodation and what safeguarding is going to be in place for that trial?
Okay, Louise.
Yeah, thank you for the question, councillor Shears. And so we've been looking at what other local authorities do in respect of this because we know what is a model that others have looked and implemented. And really, we're still engaging with those local authorities to take learning and best practice from that. And what some models look like is two bedroom properties where we've got two individuals that will then move in and share that. And what we've seen in other local authorities is that model has best been implemented involving younger people. And but that's something that we're still looking to further explore and finalise before we potentially pilot.
A couple of follow up, please. Safeguarding. Do we know what kind of safeguarding we'll be putting in place? Because I think that's key in a trial like this.
Yes. So in terms of that engagement and best practice, that's what we're looking at across local authorities around, you know, what safeguarding models have been put in place, not only with this, but obviously that's something that affects us not only across our housing options, but across our housing portfolio and our tenants.
Thank you for the question and that answer there, Louise. Councillor Lynn, I believe you wanted a question.
Yeah, thank you, convenor. As reference to four point eight point two, housing first, very, very supportive in general of the housing first project, which aims to, as the name would suggest, house people as quickly as possible and absolutely minimise the amount of time spent in temporary accommodation. And just a question about the reference to eviction. It says there's been no eviction from a housing first tenancy, which is. eviction. It says there's been no eviction from a housing first tenancy, which is great news, of course. I'm just wondering, people must have left with their own accord, abandoned the properties. Do we have any figures on that? Probably for a later date or with this meeting.
Hey, Louise. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, if that's okay, councillor Flynn would look to, councillor Lynn would look to bring that information back.
Thank you for that. And I see no further questions. So is this report noted? Thank you. Arlene, please.
Item six, Review of Rents and Other Housing Charges. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
Well, again, I'm just going to open the floor to questions. And Bailey McPherson, you're in first.
Thanks, convener. First of all, thanks very much to the officers for the very helpful briefing last week. Just a point, first of all, by changing away from the basket of indices that's been used for some considerable time, we are proposing, and our group won't oppose this, because we do understand the service delivery challenges facing the department at present, and the need to maintain the stock in good condition for our tenants. But we're very conscious of the fact that CPI is currently sitting at one point seven percent, and the lowest increase proposed of the three options available is some four point five percent, which is obviously considerably above inflation. And I think my point around that is that that will need very careful explaining to tenants as to why the levels are considerably above the rate of inflation. And I understand where officers are coming from on this. But I think it will require some careful explaining. And I think a real need to give tenants assurances around clear service standards in relation to the repair service going forward as well. My question specifically is actually about the fact that with rent increase potentially of these sort of levels, some people who currently do not qualify for either the housing element of universal credit or housing benefit will come into qualifying. And I would be grateful for some assurances that there will be an attempt to ensure that take up is maximised for our tenants at the point at which our rent increase goes ahead at the start of the new financial year.
Okay, Olga, if you could take that. But first of all, Bailey McPherson, thank you for your comments, particularly around the briefing that was given. It was very helpful. And thank you to the staff for organising that. But I'll give you Olga.
Thank you for the question, Bailey McPherson, and your comments. I would like to absolutely reassure you that we are making extensive efforts, working with our colleagues in customer services and advice, in order to increase the take up of all relevant benefits. Just now, we have a particularly big push around about pension credits for obvious reasons. But that's an ongoing piece of work that we do. But we are very focused on it in relation to rent increases as well. And we'll make sure that as part of the engagement and the follow up, that through all the mechanisms we have, that we will maximise the available help to all our tenants. It's very important, as you say.
Thank you for that. Councillor McHugh, you're in next.
Thank you. In addition to the proposed minimum rent increase of four point five percent, sheltered tenants' charges will be increased by six point eight percent. Last year, these charges were increased by ten percent. And if this year's rent consultation follows its usual format, there will be no consultation on this increase. It's quite frankly imposed, and sheltered tenants are not given any options to consider, unlike with the rent increase. Although the term options is a bit of a stretch, considering that the total discretion over the rent increase is one half of one percent. Some might say that was hardly worthy of consideration. Last year, sheltered tenants needed to click on a link within the online survey to identify the increase in sheltered charges. There were no options to consider and no specific opportunity to express a view, other than under any other comments. Care should be taken to direct sheltered tenants to this increase in a transparent manner. Can elected members be assured that for this year's consultation, more prominence will be given to the six point eight percent increase in sheltered tenants' charges?
And Olga, if you could address the engagement process, please.
Thank you, councillor McHugh. As I know you're aware from our discussions, the issue of service charge is that it's fully cost recovery. And post pandemic, there was, I think, a widespread agreement that social care workers should be better remunerated. And the fact is that our wardens are registered care workers, which means that their wage increase is significantly above the average wage increase given to the most workers in the council. So that is the main driver of this increase. We have taken on board comments that we've received in relation to the consultation process last year. And one of the things that we will be aiming to do is we have a specific approach for the sheltered complexes, which will also involve our staff being present and talking to individual tenants in the complexes, as well as giving them a range of other methods by which they can respond. It is the case that we have to carry a consultation for rent and service charge. This issue of service charges, that it is just about cost recovery, and that's why there's a lack of options there.
Yes.
I'm not disputing the level of the increase. I'm not disputing that it's not necessary. What I'm asking for is increased transparency for that increase for sheltered tenants. Last year, at the end of the rent consultation, some tenants, sheltered tenants in my ward, weren't aware that the charges had gone up by ten percent. They knew their rent had gone up, but they weren't aware that the charges had gone up. So I'm just asking for more prominence and transparency on this increase in the rent consultation.
I am absolutely sure you have that from officers there, councillor McHugh. Thank you. Bailey?
Thanks, convener. It's free just to reinforce the comments that have been made by Bailey McPherson and councillor McHugh. I hold a surgery every week at Fort Hills Shelter Complex, and I engage with many of the tenants there. And you'll not be surprised to hear that a lot of them aren't in receipt of housing benefit. And they think they're not entitled to that because they may have a small works pension that precludes them from applying. Now, next year is going to be a particularly hard year for all tenants, but especially sheltered tenants, because not only will they have this biggest increase in rent in ten years and above inflation increase, they've also got the seven percent increase in their sheltered charge. There's a ten percent increase in the fuel charges this winter, which we're going to hear about in the next committee. And also in the next committee, we're going to hear about the difficulties the council has with its finances. And there could well be a huge increase that they have to face in our council tax. And while I was really pleased to hear the work that's going to be done to try and encourage take up of the relevant benefits for those people who were entitled to them, it might need more than just having meetings in the complex, because not everyone will go to that. I think it needs door locking and face to face meetings with people in their homes to make them aware that they are entitled. And if they are entitled to it, they should claim it. And there's nothing wrong in claiming a benefit if they're entitled to it. And I think that message needs to be enforced, particularly with the older cohort that we deal with.
Well, I think it's a very relevant point. Bailey Scott, I'm sure officers have taken it on board. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, councillor Flynn?
Thanks, convener. I just sneaked in at the end there. I just wanted to reiterate what Daily Scots said. I think it's really important that we actually make sure that our elderly are being funded and actually helped as much as they can to make sure they are getting the full benefits. And I think that's been done earlier this year, where there was over one point five million raised for older people to make sure they're getting benefits. And our recent programme just went out a few weeks ago to encourage uptake again, because I absolutely agree with you. It's vitally important, because a lot of them will be reluctant. It's probably a nice way of saying it, to take part in any discussion about their income. But I think we need to break down these barriers and help them as much as we can, as the way things are. I think going back to the rent increases in general, I think Bailey McPherson's point is absolutely right in some ways. We need to present this in the right way. But can we just get assurances from the officers that the extra funding for the capital spend and the climate change section of the report, section six, it will be spent? And it's not just going to be brought money into the council just to sit in a bank? Thank you.
Olga, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Flynn. As you'll be aware, we had some issues this financial year in relation to EWI projects. However, you will also be aware that we have recently taken forward a number of committee reports and putting out those projects through a new framework, following notification from SSE OVO, that they no longer wish to be in that business. So one of the things that we are working very hard on is to make sure that we have got a credible approach to our delivery of our capital investment. And obviously, revised capital plan would come back post any decision around about rent increases. But deliverability is at the forefront of our mind, and we are making good progress now that we have a new approach in place.
Are you okay with that, councillor? Okay, because Bailey Keenan also snuck in just at the death there. I'm going to say yours is the last contribution on this report, Bailey Keenan.
I was trying to get in earlier, but it tells me it's going to send you the message at eight o'clock tomorrow morning. So that's not exactly worthwhile here. The question I'd like to ask, since Bailey McPherson raised it, it's in relation to repairs and the service that people should expect. And given that the rent increase is going up considerably above inflation, I'm just wondering how officers would look towards addressing or making people aware of the service level agreement that they should be receiving? How quick will repairs be done if you're reporting them? Because at the moment, I think housing in the city is broken. And, you know, I would like to see the service getting better. My mailbag is full of complaints in relation to housing. I've got meat with the chief executive later in the week about it. And I'm kind of be the only one that's got that level of mailbag. So how are we going to paint the picture without, you know, we'll get repairs done timiously? That if people come with windows, we're looking to replace them, or we're looking to sort them, and not just bar them off to, you know, because that's the impression that I appear to get at the moment. Send people coming back time and time again. No communication for the housing department, and no communication between the housing department and myself.
Tony, would you like to address the communication issue there?
Yeah, thanks, convener. Thanks, Bailey McPherson. No, except the point that's been made, that there's more we should be doing in terms of communicating with our residents. And certainly in terms of some of the progress we've made recently with the housing repairs and relits programme, and driving down the number of voids, we are making progress across the board. And I have questions specifically about repairs. And we have also taken papers to this committee before around our window replacement strategy, for example. So we are all right just now. I take on board the point that Bailey Keenan is making, and we will endeavour to update committee as we continue to make more progress.
Thank you. And so with that comment and reply, is this approved? Thank you. Arlene, please.
That takes us on to item seven, Empowered Communities Citywide Boundary Wall Improvement Works Sourcing Strategy, and this is for approval.
Again, we'll just open that one up to questions.
Bailey Scott? I wanted to ask about Claypot's Pond. I've raised concerns about the wall there for a number of years. But more recently, I've raised an issue regarding the steps from Bagola Road that aren't the best to use. And I was told that they would be repaired this financial year. Will those still be done? Or will they now be included in the overall wall repair package?
Tony, thank you.
Thanks, convener. Bailey Scott for the question. Yeah, we'll certainly look at that. And I do appreciate you were given that undertaking before, so I'll personally follow that up.
Thank you. Well, it appears that's the only question on this. So is this approved? Thank you. Arlene, please.
Item eight, Purment of Contractor to Deliver Complex Fire Damage Void. This is for approval.
Councillor Coleman?
Thank you, Deputy Lord Provost. I'm pleased to see anything coming forward that speeds up these fire damage void repairs and relits. I previously raised with officers my and constituents' concerns about fire damage void in St Columba Gardens in my ward, which had a fire in twenty twenty two, and have simply taken an actual age to progress. Can officers indicate exactly how many voids are taking this length of time to deal with? And are they confident that this procurement framework will improve that situation?
Olga, you taking this one?
Thank you for the question. I'm not able to provide you with the information on the numbers in terms of length of time, but we can certainly come back with that information. And we certainly intend, this procurement is designed, working with City Dev, to provide us with additional specialist capacity to speed that process up.
Thank you. Is that all right for you, councillor Coleman?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. And I see no further questions on that. So is that approved? Thank you. Arlene, please.
Item nine, Tenders Received by the Head of Designing Property, and this is also for approval.
Okay, I'll just leave it a second if there's any questions. I don't see any. Oh. Councillor Flynn?
Yeah, thanks, convener. Can we just get a bit of clarity on the first project, Camper Down Shallow Development, with regards to the energy gas, efficiency gas boilers? Can we be assured that these are capable of taking hydrogen in the future and not just gases standard, please?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Just to confirm that this heating upgrade is, for example, the replacement of radiators and associated pipework. And so not necessarily boilers that we'll be looking to replace within the heating upgrade at this development.
Thanks, convener. It does actually say in you can dance and high efficiency gas boilers in the actual project information, just for clarity. Can maybe just look into that for me and come back? It's okay.
I think just maybe everyone should get that clarity when it comes through.
If I could just come back there, convener, that councillor Flynn is indeed correct. It does state that within the appendix, and that will be what's getting undertaken. Thank you.
Bailey Keenan?
Just with councillor Flynn asking about whether the things do fuel, can we get an answer on that? And if it is do fuel, how efficient are these boilers? Often, you know, having worked in a previous life, people were tending to move away from things that were joint fueled, and suggesting you should stick to one and remain that way.
Okay, thanks, convener. Bailey Keenan, we will revert back to you with a response to your question.
Councillor Black?
This debate has taken an interesting turn. We're talking about hydrogen and gas boilers. When I first saw this, I was pleased that people in my ward, just with Martin, are going to get the benefit of more efficient heating systems. I'm interested that they discuss its gas boilers. And I wouldn't be that keen on hydrogen. But what I would like to know is, are the radiators able to take the throughput from air source heat pumps, which I think are a more lightweight replacement in future as these things become more affordable and more practical in the kind of housing that we have? So hydrogen, I'd be interested to know. But I'm really more interested in air source heat pumps.
Okay, thank you, councillor Black. We will come back to you with a definitive answer to that question. Thanks.
Thank you for that, Tony. And with that, I see no more questions. So is this approved? Thank you. And that's the business. Thank you, and that's the business. Good evening. I think everyone's settled down, if you're available. Yeah, thanks very much, Convenor. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest? See a declaration from councillor Crichton.
Thank you, Convenor. I wish to declare an interest relative to confidential item sixteen as my employer of attendance see within the site concerned.
Thank you, that's noted. Councillor Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Yeah, so thank you, Convenor. It's just, I note there are some confidential items at the end of the agenda. I think the phrase is be dealt with in the usual way. I would rather they weren't, I would like to speak on one of them, please. So thank you.
Yeah, okay, that's it, thank you. Thanks very much.
Yeah, nearly forgot, just in relation to the items that refer to Lysion Culture Dundee.
Yeah, take that as noted, people on the, they want to see.
Yeah, thanks very much, Convenor. I would now like to advise the committee that requests for joint deputation are being received from Dean Millen and Margaret Hogg of Douglas Local Management Group to address the committee in relation to item twelve on consultation released to East End Community Campus. In addition, a request has been received to the committee in the same item. It has been received from Jennifer Hanson of Douglas, who covered, is committee minded to hear the deputations?
Are they minded to go ahead with that one? Bring that one forward, yeah. I think on the fact that we're going on for a wee while, I think after this one, we'll have a break after the item twelve and we'll have a break for ten minutes after that. Thank you. Good evening, Dean and Margaret, yeah. You have seven minutes between both of you to make your deputation. I'll ask if anyone wants any questions after that for you.
Hi, good evening, elected members. My name is Margaret Hogg and this is my colleague, Dean Millen. We are committee members of Douglas Local Management Group. I would like to address the committee on the transfer of services report that is before you. The population in Douglas is approximately 6,773, of which 5,960 are in the most deprived area in Scotland. That also includes 1,422 children. And this equates to around an eight percent increase between 2016 and 2022. The area that Douglas Community Centre sits in is actually in the top five percent of the most deprived communities in Scotland. There are more people with long term health conditions and also a lower life expectancy than many areas in Dundee and higher than the Scottish average. The footfall in Douglas Community Centre from September twenty three to September twenty four was 72,800. The services that are being considered for removal cater for people from birth right through to the oldest in our community. These services are crucial in Douglas and help reduce the impact of poverty and reducing isolation, gives us access to support services, provides food, hot meals and the opportunity to develop new skills. Here are some of the quotes from the people that we took on a survey in the community centre when you first said that things might move on, which was almost a year past. I've got three quotes. Quote one, it's an integral part of the community. Many people use the centre several times, like myself, and I would be lost without it. Quote two, after Covid, my mental health suffered. And by coming to Douglas Community Centre, I found the activities I could join, which has been a lifesaver for me. Quote three, I am quite lonely sometimes, but coming to groups in the community centre and meeting people helps me feel less lonely. These services are currently delivered in the heart of Douglas Community Centre where they are needed most. We are concerned that this consultation seems to focus on protected characteristics and doesn't say how it will assess the impact on people affected by poverty. I would ask that if all the proposed services are to be relocated, does this mean that Dundee City Council are withdrawing from the Douglas community? We fear the effect on Douglas community centre would be devastating. I ask that you reconsider the need to consultate or defer it and come and see what goes on in the Douglas area. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. I just want to read a statement from a user of the centre who attends a recovery group and the Douglas Action Group. Whilst working in education, I found myself with care responsibilities to my father. It was at that point that I decided to take early retirement to fill up the time to look after him. Not long after this was arranged, my dad passed away, leaving me alone with no job or routine. My mental health was ascending out of control and I was unable to access suitable healthcare, where I found I had lost all my possessions, where the only way out was compensating suicide, until I found myself admitted to hospital. After receiving suitable mental healthcare, I realised that I had to be proactive and firm my day up with a routine. I decided to access my local community centre in Douglas, which is the heart of the community. I was informed about the open door programme that was running as part of the cost of living crisis. It was here that I ascended other provision and learning opportunities, without which I believe I would not be here today. I'm concerned that in a similar situation again, would I access these learning opportunities if they were in a school campus building? My answer is probably not. I have struggled to access provision in a school and I feel that my fellow partnerships, participate those who attend to support CAF, would not access support at a school due to the stigma and result in increased anxiety and mental health issues with those people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you just both first there or second seats, anyone has any questions for you? Bailey Scott, please.
Thank you for the deputation, that was very helpful. Can you let me know, please, if anyone from the council has spoken to you about the services that you currently deliver from your centre and what services you will be delivering from the community campus? And are they like for like or will there be any reduction in the services that will be provided from the school?
They haven't said there would be a reduction and they haven't specifically said which services would move. We're just assuming that would be most of what was in the community centre.
Thanks, Bailey. Well, Billy McPherson, please.
Thank you. Just a question, thanks very much both to Dean and Margaret for their deputation. Just a question to Margaret. Margaret contacted myself and a number of other elected members about a concern that the Douglas Local Management Group has, that they feel that the report coming forward tonight hasn't given an assessment of socio economic disadvantage or inequalities and therefore fails to comply with the Fairer Scotland duty. I was wondering, Margaret and Dean, if you have discussed this at all with officers of the council and what the response to that is?
No, we haven't discussed it with officers of the council. We actually Googled it to find out what it all was. And in your report, it didn't mention those words. So that's why we mentioned it in our first report, like. But no, we haven't had anything from the council to say that. I have been told that the social and economic thing would be brought up after the next meeting. But being naive, we don't know really much about that.
Okay, thanks indeed for that, Margaret. I'll have a question to officers in a moment or two regarding that particular matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy McPherson. Councillor McKip, please.
Thank you. And thank you so much for your deputation. It's really important when people come out of their communities and come and speak to us face to face here. The numbers, the footfall over the last, well, year, September twenty three to September twenty two, that is incredibly impressive, fifty two thousand eight hundred. What do you think?
Seventy two thousand dollars.
Sorry?
Seventy two thousand.
Seventy two thousand, that is amazing, Margaret. What do you think the main barriers will be to that number of people who come into your local community centre if these services are moved out of Douglas to Drumbeath Road?
I think the main part would be the fact that it's a school environment and that there'd be a lot of stigma attached to going in, especially for our food cupboard. We're not really sure. Lots of people are saying different things. The new campus is not giving us that much information on what we would be able to obtain there. But probably they don't know that either yet. But yeah, we're thinking if that new campus was built in the middle of Douglas, then you could call it community campus. It's being built in a field, so it's not community.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further questions, so thank you very much for your deputation. So sorry. Oh, don't push, sorry.
Hi, Margaret. It was a sunny day the last time I saw you, but I've got a confession. During the election, I committed to your toilets. However, I'm quite familiar with the centre. When we met on that sunny day, when we looked, it was the park, and you'd mentioned that Sistema take up quite a bit of the space within the community centre. Is that still the case?
Yeah, that's very much the case. Sistema Scotland, we know it as, what do you mean, big noise? We know it as big noise. They take up the musical aspects from the two primary schools in the area and they deliver their service in the school and they also deliver some of their service in the community centre. But it's well attended and much needed.
So would I be right in thinking that they also keep their guests and violins and trumpets and all those kind of things? They keep them with you?
They keep them and we have a storage.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Black, please.
Are you satisfied that there are good active travel routes, by which I mean walking, cycling and buses, from Douglas to the new campus?
Absolutely not. If you lived at the far end of Douglas, which is where, if you don't know it, where Sainsbury's is, there's a bus that goes along there on the hour, but that stops at tea time. And then it doesn't come back on to the next day. Anything else would be getting the bus along to maybe Asda and walking down. If you lived in Douglas, as far as the medical centre, is well within walking distance, well within walking distance. But if you live past the medical centre to the far end of Douglas, definitely not walking distance.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's all. Sorry, Bailey Keenan sneaked in there.
Wonder if you could maybe tell me some of the age groups that would attend? Given that, you know, I might let a child move around the corner to go to the community centre, but it's certainly be reluctant to have them travel the distance to Drumbeath Road. So is there people that might be disadvantaged there as well, given, you know, that you'd let your child walk around the corner, but no necessarily that distance?
Well, of course, we have like, we have three mother and toddler groups that run within a week, three different times. We also have like an under tens group, which most of the children live in the vicinity and they could quite easily come up. Then we have like an older, like ten to eleven, just before they leave primary school. That's on on a Thursday night. And these groups are like forty people at a time, twenty five to forty on a regular basis. These are the age group that you're speaking about, that you would be able to let go to the centre on their own. And then on and after that, we've got two youth clubs that cater for like primary seven to S two. And that one's at sixty to eighty children. And then you have the other ones after that, which has got an average of about sixty that attend that. And they're all can just manage to get themselves to there. Whether they would be allowed to go that distance is a different matter.
Hey, thank you very much for that. And any questions there with officers after? Going to ask Jennifer, if she'd like to do the deputation? Oh, sorry. Thank you, Jennifer. Do you have seven minutes to make your deputation? There'll be questions after, please stay there after you've finished.
Hello, I'm Jennifer. I'm a volunteer from Douglas Food Cupboard. In the two years since we've opened in the Douglas Community Centre, we've gained over 600 members, with ninety two percent of them from the East End area. We opened on a Wednesday during the day and we then started opening on a Thursday evening as we seen the need for work and families and students within our community. Our weekly attendance is of average of sixty, eighty percent of those people from the heart of Douglas. Many of those are elderly and young families. We are in the front line in tackling poverty in Douglas, signposting to other support workers, agencies and tackling social isolation. This has not had any consideration in the consultation as it is focusing on protecting characteristics rather than any reference to the socioeconomic impact. The anxiety amongst our members is increasing on a weekly basis. They are worried about the stigma attached to accessing this service within another setting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was just sexy, is there any questions? Heather, sorry, my apologies, do you want to come in this one?
Sorry, it's a similar question to the one I would have asked Margaret. I'm very aware of the community centre. So I think it's just to stress that this is a consultation and making sure that as many people as possible respond to the consultation. Do you have plans for ensuring that there's a strong response from the community and that people will be aware of this so that don't lose their opportunity?
Yeah, within the community centre, we try to have like iPads available, like paper copies available for them to like, to help them with the consultation. Sometimes you can find that people don't want to get involved, like that find putting their, like, their mark on something difficult. So that's why, like, generally the iPads and stuff, then it's a lot easier. But yeah, we do plan to have everybody that uses the centre involved in a consultation. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any further questions, but thank you very much for your deputation. Oh, sorry, as, oh, sorry, next stage, sorry about that. Thank you. Billy McPherson's in there quickly. Hold on a second, Billy McPherson, until Jennifer gets her seat again. Okay, thank you. We'll just move on to the formal part of the interviews. Billy McPherson, please.
Yeah, it's just really in relation to the email that the Douglas Local Management Group had sent to myself and a number of other elected members. I'm just going to very briefly quote from it because I'm wanting some clarification from officers about the Fairer Scotland duty. And basically what they say is the Fairer Scotland duty states that our consideration should be given to reducing inequalities of outcome caused by socioeconomic disadvantage when making strategic decisions. The report only makes reference to protected characteristics with no reference to socioeconomic impact. In the report, no assessment of socioeconomic disadvantage or inequalities has been done and therefore we don't think it complies with the Fairer Scotland duty. And I'm therefore wondering if officers could comment on that and give some reassurance that responsibilities around the Fairer Scotland duty have indeed been considered.
Thank you. Andrea, please.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. So at this point, we're not making any recommendations for changes. We're looking to go out and consult so that we can fully understand the impact that this could have, not only on protected characteristics, but we would also look at that socioeconomic impact. At the next stage, any recommendations would have integrated impact assessment. And as you've wondered, impact does meet inequality duties. And we would go into a lot more detail in the integrated impact assessment with any recommendations so that elected members would be fully informed of any decision that they were making and any of the options that might. So that elected members would be fully informed of any decision that they were making and any of the options that might come forward.
Thank you. So answer your question, Billy McPherson?
It does. Could I just make one point? I'm grateful to Andrea for that clarification. I think the point I would say, and I'm sure Andrea and colleagues will take this into account at the time of integrated impact assessments, a later stage. I think the point made by Margaret about, um, access and transport um, is a very, very valid one in relation to, um, the uh, the eastern part of Douglas, which is some considerable distance from the, uh, East End Community Campus. I I'm not really looking for a further response because I know that, uh, officers will take it into account, but I think the lack of evening transport or very little evening transport um, is a clear, uh, consideration as well. So I know that will be taken into account, but I'm grateful to Andrea for our response at this this stage. And I do appreciate it is only going up to consultation at this stage. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Billy Scott, please.
Thanks, Convenor. I I think the new school should provide additional services and not result in the reduction of services that are currently available. I have two questions, please, that I'd like to ask the officers firstly. Will the consultees have the option to say they want to keep the service provision as it is currently, as it's currently delivered, or is the expectation that all services will no longer be delivered from the, uh, properties that they're currently delivered from by Dundee City Council, leisure culture dungeon? Uh, because the way the consultation seems to read is that that the intention is that these services do move over and the consultation is more about the impact that that move will have. Uh, and if that is to be an option, then it needs to be made clear in the consultation that people can respond that way. And the second question is, will the consultation spell out exactly what can be expected from the hub? Um, my knowledge of the community centre isn't as great as it is with Douglas Sports Centre. But in Douglas Sports Centre, users of that would need to know what the size of the gym is in the new establishment. What equipment will be there, how that compares with the existing gym? Douglas Sports Centre is the biggest one that is operated by leisure and culture, and I can't see that being replicated in the new school. The hours of operation as well, the sports centre is currently open from seven thirty to ten o'clock. It's available all day. Will the services there be available all day to to users? There's classes that go on throughout the day at Douglas Sports Centre. Will they all still happen in the new facility? So consultees will need to know all that information to allow them to make an informed response.
Thank you. Uh, pass it on to Audrey, do you have to go some other, all in a lot?
Thank you. Sunday I saw, sorry. Um, and the sponsors, it's quite a lot in there, but just to, um, try and get some headlines in on that. In terms of distances, so on, um, you will see in the papers for the development of the campus, there's a travel plan. That travel plan is not fully completed yet and and when that's done, that will take into account any information from the consultation that would, we would need to address. We also, um, have as part of the project board, which, um, there are, you know, representatives from, um, the local communities on that board, done quite an extensive exercise around the availability of spaces in the building, including all of the sports and leisure facilities. And as it stands just now, without getting into detailed numbers, happy to share that beyond the committee. Um, you know, we're talking about when we open this building, it's not school, it's a campus. There will be forty percent of the spaces available within the building, um, bookable spaces for community groups. Uh, seven of those spaces are the three G pitches, there are the the gyms, there's the fitness centre, there's the the mugger, there's the grass pitch and there's the outdoor gym and there's the games halls, all available and to be booked. And that's on the timetable and modelling that we did and shared at the project board in May of this year. And so if we need to share that further, very happy to do so.
Thank you for that. I think your notes, your point, uh, points you raise, Billy Scott, I think will be noted by officers. And I think we'll want to take that forward within the consultation and make sure that happens as well.
Uh, I I don't agree with the report, Convenor, and would have an amendment, but I see that Bailey, Bailey Keenan has put forward that he's got an amendment, so it's likely to be the same.
Uh, Consul Shears, please.
Thanks very much, Convenor, and much of what I was going to ask has already been answered. And just a small thing, what is the scope of engagement from the council going to be like in the local community? I saw that they'll be, um, specifically targeting users of the services, but is there also going to be sort of a lot of online advertising? Are we going to have officers go out to these places, encourage people, um, to fill in the consultation if it does go ahead?
Yeah, so we will do a lot of, um, social media advertising, but we'll also make paper copies available at the facilities. And there'll be drop-in sessions available with officers there to help support people to fill out the consultation. There'll also be, um, targeted emails to particular groups that currently use the so they'll get the link with the online survey and told about the other ways to interact. So there's quite a lot of different, um, processes in place. And that includes leisure and culture because they obviously use and have different groups that use some of the facilities as well.
Sure question. Uh, Consul Hunter, please.
Uh, thank you, Convenor. Um, the first, uh, deputation talked about, um, they felt there was a lack of engagement with the community. Um, as with another, a number, a number of other elected members, I sit on the project board for the East End Campus. And I know, um, from discussions at those meetings, um, there has been some, uh, consultation with the community, um, previously, um, regarding not only the the campus, but what might, um, go in there. Um, and I know, I'm just looking at when the minutes from the previous meetings, that there was a commitment from officers to engage with the community and have discussions. So I wonder if officers could just explain what engagement they've had with the community to date uh, and and what the result of that engagement has been.
Like to Tony?
Thanks, Convenor. Thanks, Consular, I'll ask Marie Daly just to comment at this point.
Yes, thank you for the the question. The there's been extensive consultation to date, and as you've said, Consular Hunter, through the project board. The consultation to date has focused primarily on the development of the campus and what people would see the campus being used for. It hasn't focused on the the services in the the buildings we're talking about today. But there, as Audrey said, there there has been matching across with both of them. But we can provide elected members with details of the extensive consultation, which has helped to inform not only activities, but also the design of the building.
Thank you. That's your question? Yeah, thank you. Uh, Consul McKee, please.
Thank you. Um, at four point four of this report, we're told that there has been ongoing community engagement with young people in the wider community seeking their views on the provision of services that could be offered in the new campus. Now, we've just, we've just heard about that from Marie Daly. And that well may be correct, but very little mention has been made of the possibility that expansion of services within the new community campus might herald closure of existing facilities. This has been the elephant in the room from day one. I've been approached by individual constituents and representatives of community groups in the East End. And I'm sure other elected members have had similar representations expressing real concerns around the future of existing facilities in the ward. And when I raised these concerns at the East End Campus Project Board and elsewhere, I was told that there was to be a review of facilities across the East End and the North East wards and that community groups would be engaged in this process. Now we're presented with a consultation on the proposed closure of four separate community facilities. A consultation is not a review. A review would include a consideration of what facilities already exist, how they're used, both in terms of services offered and the usage rates, their geographical location in relation to ease of access for local populations. And importantly, we'd gather the views of those using the facilities and the wider community on the value placed on providing these services in the heart of a community. All of this has now been superseded by a proposal to relocate these services and identify any impacts and corresponding mitigations. There's no detail in this report of questions that will be asked in the consultation. And as we all know, any survey or consultation outcomes are only as good as the questions asked. The four facilities listed for possible closure are the subject of one joint consultation. Has any consideration been given to gearing specific questions to specific community spaces and the differing views of a disparate community? Has any consideration been given to the effects of moving facilities from the heart of a community to its outer edge and beyond? And how such a move might affect the vibrancy or otherwise of that local community? How will these questions be addressed within the consultation? Quite frankly, this is a poor show. And my constituents can be forgiven for believing that the decision to close these four community facilities has already been made and they are powerless to prevent this from happening.
Thank you. Uh, I'll go back to you, Marie, able to answer some of the points that I raised there. Bear in mind that this is in light, the council have agreed to approach the community open model.
I think the main point in in relation to Consular McKee's question is around that at this point it is a consultation exercise, it's not a decision to close. It's to look to see what the the impacts of closure would be. And I think we've been clear about that and about that that would be the the view of the services that are taking place to see if there is a, an opportunity to move them to another location without causing a negative impact.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Uh, Consul Short, please.
I understand this is a a consultation, but in about the, uh, worst case scenario, um, presumably, and we have a very successful model in the west end of the city, when the life centre became the change centre, and and it's providing, um, services and it's earlier, it's just under different, uh, governance. And if anybody were to come along who was someone who could provide similar services, whether it's the group that are already there, or if it was a a bigger named, uh, third sector organisation, will these conversations be ongoing or does the consultation, uh, make that mute?
Yeah, no, it's you, Marie.
Um, the details of the consultation questions will also be looking at, um, offering people the opportunity to see if that is something that they would like to do with the 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 buildings. As with the recent consultations that have been undertaken, looking at other facilities within the city, we will also be looking for information about anyone who would see other potential usage or ownership of these buildings.
Thank you for that. Bailey Keenan, see you have an amendment, but, uh, taking notice of what, uh, Mr. Murray said earlier on, I'm not minded to take an amendment on this report and just to move on to the report itself. Sorry?
It doesn't have to be submitted in in writing, the standing orders allow you to move the direct negative of the report without submitting it in writing.
You just confirm that, uh, Mr. Murray, with regards to procedure placing. Yeah, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Convenor. As Bailey Scott has indicated, it's always been the customary practice of the council to allow the direct negatives to be moved without previous information.
Okay, I'll take that on board, uh, Bailey Keenan, is that what you're proposing?
Uh, uh, that seems to be what I'm left proposing, yes, so I'll just prove that we know the report will take no further action.
Do you have a second?
I would form a second, Bailey Keenan's.
But there's a second motion. I am proposing to put the report forward as it is and seek approval to consultant who grows ought to relocate services from existing buildings in Mitfield in Douglas to the new East End Community Campus. As recommended, the council undertake public consultation proposal related to both council and leisure and culture. Dundee runs services and the committee has asked to read the recommendations and I will stand by that, so I can I'll get a second, please?
I'll form my second, uh, here.
Thank you. Miss much for the vote, please, Rod.
Yeah, thank you very much, Convenor. Okay, the motion by the convenor seconded by Bailey Source is the report be agreed as submitted. The amendment by Bailey Keenan seconded by Chris McKee is the report be noted, don't need to take no further, uh, action. Convenor?
Motion.
Christopher Anderson?
Motion.
Mister Black?
Motion.
Deputy of Prose Cadell? Bailey Dawson?
The motion.
Christopher Hunter?
Motion.
Christopher Lynn?
Motion.
Christopher Mills?
Motion.
Christopher Rowan?
Motion.
Bailey Source?
Motion.
Mister Short?
Motion, please.
Mister Smith?
Motion.
Mister Tolland?
Motion.
Bailey Keenan?
Amendment.
Mister Cookshank?
Amendment.
Mister Finnegan?
Amendment.
Mister McKee?
Amendment.
Mister Kirby?
Amendment.
Mister Scullen?
Amendment.
Mister Shears?
Amendment.
Bailey Wright?
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson?
The amendment.
Mister Coleman?
Amendment.
Mister Creighton?
Amendment.
Mister Duncan?
Amendment.
Bailey Scott?
Amendment.
That gives you thirteen for the motion and thirteen for the amendment, you have the casting vote, Convenor.
Motion.
Yeah, thank you very much. That concludes consideration of that item. So now it takes you back to the agenda as submitted, an item two before you was a minute of pension subcommittee and pension board.
And listen to us, and just say, due to the time, I think we're all due a break, come to a break, so we'll have ten minutes. So we'll be back, twelve minutes, we'll be back at half past seven, please. If I've passed, we all back in? Can we take our seats, please, then we'll get started? Hey, over to yourself, please.
Yes, thank you very much, convener. That takes you back to item two, pension, bit of pension subcommittee and pension board of twenty four to June, which is for noting.
Questions on either two? No, okay, that's agreed.
Thank you very much, item three then, before is the winter fuel payment item. This has been placed on the agenda at the request of Billy Keenan.
Scott, thank you, Billy Keenan, please.
Okay, convener, thanks, thanks for allowing me on the agenda. It's not often I put items up where I realise it's probably going to be a kick me harder session, given that, you know, it's a decision made by a Labour Chancellor that I don't particularly agree with. And I think there would be many ways to delve differently. That obviously being that they could have maybe done something to reduce the fuel costs for people in general and people's cost of living before the move to removing the winter fuel allowance. I think in Scotland it's called the winter heat allowance and I think it's a default matter as of now. So the proposal would be that we write to both Rachel Eves and John Swinney, ask them where he can sit up. The other part of the motion obviously is that I would clearly liken the council started that and it's to try and do whatever they can to maximise benefits. I think that we should look towards the people that we have on into people's homes, whether that be the fire brigade on their duties, right across the partnership and healthcare workers, they're going to people's homes to try and promote the fact that there is the opportunity for council to do a benefit check for them and to see whether we can maximise the benefits that they receive. And obviously the third part of that is obviously where people get in some kind of difficulty that we give them some kind of wraparound support and do what kind of support there. As I say, it's an open go, kick me harder session. I just think we need to do the right thing for people. There is many people that are just below that threshold by a couple of pounds. And I'm hoping that, you know, there is some level of change, but I'm prepared to speak up in relation to when they've got it wrong. Unlike obviously the administration, they're not prepared to accept there's a housing emergency, even when the government's got it right. So leave it at that and I'll look for someone second me.
Take your second, the first is you, councillor Shears, yeah? Okay.
Yeah, as Billy Keenan said, probably not the most politically astute move. And I'll be quick because I'm sure you're all lining up to take a dig at Labour now that we're starting to threaten again in Scotland. But it is about doing the right thing and admitting that as a party, we think the government has got this entirely wrong. And in using our own party mechanics, we've expressed that to the party as well and no reason the council mechanics as well to express it. And I think it is really important to note that the only reason decisions like this, which shouldn't have been made, but certainly difficult decisions do need to be made, is because of the mess that the Tories have left us in with a massive financial black hole because of their mismanagement of the economy for the last fifteen years. And now Labour are finally back in power. It's certainly not something that's going to be fixed in a matter of weeks. Hopefully on Wednesday we do get a start to that. And hopefully on Wednesday as well, as a consequence of the budget, we have more money coming into council coffers, we have more money coming into Holyrood so that Scottish government can reverse their cut as well. But I will leave it at that and for my second, thank you.
Thank you. It's also interesting here that you actually know what's happening in the budget. So again, probably you're breaking away from your party's guidance on that side as well. I think it's also clear that slashing the winter fuel allowance was actually a disgrace. And I think like many of your other politicians to actually taking that on board in both parliaments, because it's quite embarrassing really, the rise in energy bills as well. I think Labour Party promised to reduce them by around three hundred pounds, if I remember correctly. But I think that's really part of the thing. I think you're on your for standing up for your party, but I think we're past that post really in some respects. To blame the black hole on the issue for that, that was a political decision made by Labour Party, not by the Tories, and I think that should be noted as well. I see councillor Tolland has an amendment. I think firstly going back to your own motion, your Billy Keenan, I think just to highlight point two, where you said the council taking up possible actions to maximise the uptake pension credit. I think I mentioned earlier this evening that we're doing that, that was done earlier this year. And even about two weeks ago, we started another cycle of this, bringing, making sure that we brought in nearly one point five million pounds to pensioners within the city earlier this year, which is a recognition of the work has been done by the team and I'm out there proposing that we actually continue to promote that need for all pensioners. I mentioned the Billy Scott earlier, the importance of making sure we find as many people in the difficult situation who shouldn't be afraid of any stigma that's been created by the slashing the winter fuel allowance and come forward and help and look for that support to make sure they get all the benefits they can that are available to them. But I'll go to councillor Tolland for an amendment. If you, officers can put it on the screen, please. Sean.
Yeah, thank you. Just waiting for it coming up. And I mean, respect to the Dundee council labour group, to be honest, in bringing this motion forward. I think it's pretty obvious that it is an incredibly contentious issue across the board, across Scotland and across the UK. And I can appreciate that there is a lot of division within the Labour Party as a result of that. I am, we are making an amendment on two basic reasons. And I think the first one is that it is slightly dis- well, actually, it's not slightly disingenuous, it is disingenuous to apportion equal blame to the Scottish government and to Westminster or the Scottish Parliament and to the Westminster Parliament as well. This is a cut imposed upon the Scottish people and imposed upon the Scottish Parliament. Whilst Westminster majorly voted for this cut, it was pretty clear that the Scottish Parliament voted against that cut in their motion only a few months back. The motion included an end to the means testing of this and for a request and a demand that the money be given to the Scottish government so we can continue this as a universal benefit. I think that if we write to both and ask for this to be non-means tested, it does not reflect the actual political reality on the ground. It's not based in political fact, I don't think. There is no equal liability here. It is imposed upon the Scottish Parliament and we have no choice in this. This is for me the political equivalent of flooding a village, giving the villagers free sandbags and then telling them it's their fault that they didn't prevent the flooding. This is imposed upon the Scottish government by a Labour Westminster government. Now, I understand to a certain degree, and we've had the Prime Minister telling us that difficult decisions need to be made. And yes, we do have austerity and we have a long history of austerity and a deficit. Difficult decisions have to be made, but the difficult decisions seem to be that the economy is going to be built on the back of sacrificing our vulnerable people. It's not just the pensioners that will be, not just the pensioners, but also parents in terms of the two bedroom tax as well. So we have an instinct, I think, from the new Labour government, where it's setting out to build an economy that seeks to punish our vulnerable. And I think that that instinct unfortunately is probably what caused the defeat in these recent by-elections, because you will know more than us that you've heard this on the doors quite a lot. That's the reason for the amendment. We want to write and congratulate the Scottish government and the First Minister for leading the charge against the cuts in the winter fuel payment. And we do make demands that that money be given to us to allow us to complete a universal payment and not one that leads us down a path and forces us into a path of means testing. So I would urge that we support the amendment.
Thank you and very well said. I see councillor Mills is the second.
Thank you, convener. Just following on with what Siobhan pointed at the start, it is good to see that the Dundee Labour Party have acknowledged that this was a terrible decision. And just following on from what else councillor Tolland says, that during the recent elections that almost every single door, the issue of winter fuel payment being removed were raised, be that older people directly or those who knew folk that had been affected, and I'm sure it will be echoed by the other parties in this chamber. We're short of 900,000 pensioners in Scotland and 20,800 here in Dundee losing out because of this move by the UK government. We surely all agree this is not right. Research conducted by the Joseph Runnery Foundation in 2017 found that means testing this benefit could be deadly. Based on the findings, the lives of 3,850 people would be at risk. And I assume these are the reasons why the Labour Party has brought this motion. And although I do agree with the principle of this motion, that just doesn't go far enough. Actually, the UK government have met that the most vulnerable within our society are paying the price for a political choice. And although we are limited in actions we can take from a council's perspective, I would like to commend the incredible work being carried out by the council's advice service team who have, as others have mentioned tonight, since February this year successfully helped older people claim benefits totaling £1.5 million with further steps and initiatives being taken to reach more of our older people. So let's continue to actively encourage our older people to claim the benefits they're entitled to and use our voices, local councillors, to signpost direct and more collaboratively with Dundee City Council to ensure each and every citizen gets what they're entitled to. A motion is simply not enough. However, we still have elected parliamentarians voting for this in both parliaments. And unless you can change the minds of those in power at number 10, I feel that this disastrous policy will continue to have a huge impact on our older people. So I'm very happy to second this amendment and show the work that the council and the Scottish Parliament have been doing to triumph against some of this impact.
Thank you, councillor Mills. And again, very well said and focused on a very pertinent points in the rationale of what was going on here with the winter fuel allowance being slashed and etcetera. Before we go to anything else, I'll take Billy McPherson.
Thanks, convener. I think it's quite an unusual situation, shall we say, that the Labour group is asking other parties to help them lobby their own government to overturn a decision, which I think generally it would appear across the chamber, we all agree, was an extremely bad decision. And our party has both at Scottish Parliament level and at Westminster strongly opposed the cut undertaken by both Labour at Westminster and indeed by the SNP government in Holyrood. So let's be quite clear about this. The effect of the cut in winter fuel allowance has a very dramatic effect on older people in Scotland. Independent age estimate that in Scotland, up to 70,000 older households could be missing out on the pension credit they're entitled to. And therefore, I absolutely commend the efforts being made by welfare rights and the welfare sector across Dundee to try to encourage more people who are entitled to pension credit but not currently receiving it to claim. But nonetheless, there will be, and to be fair to Bailey Keenan, his motion alludes to this fact, that there are people, many people, older people, who will now lose out on winter fuel allowance who are just above the eligibility level. And that is deeply concerning. And the effect on elderly people, both in Scotland and indeed across the UK, is quite clearly very detrimental. Now councillor Flynn called the decision a disgrace. And I would agree with that, but it is equally a disgrace that the SNP government in Holyrood has done the same thing. And let's just remember the size of the Scottish government budget. It is £59.7 billion this year. And all that is required to make this right, whether the money comes for Westminster or not, is £178 million. So it was within the gift of the Scottish government, should it choose to do so, to readjust its own budget to ensure that the cut did not happen in Scotland. It has chosen not to do that. And I would say in that respect, the SNP and Labour are quite frankly two sides of the same coin on this particular issue. Given that the Labour motion is far more matter of fact and doesn't try to apportion blame, it simply says that we should be writing to both the Chancellor of the Exchequer and the First Minister. We will support that one as the more measured of the two motions. But the point at the end of the day is this. The Scottish government should think again on its decision to not readjust its budget to take account of the fact that the winter fuel allowance will no longer be paid to all retirement pensioners in Scotland. And fundamentally, the Chancellor should, in her budget later this week, reverse the cut for the whole of the United Kingdom. Thank you, convener.
Thank you, Billy McPherson. I won't agree with much of what you've said there. I do agree with part of it, as you can imagine. But I'll come back to that at another point. Billy Scott, please.
Thanks, convener. This is quite strange for me because this is the first time in 14 years that it's my party that's not on the receiving end of a verbal mauling in the city chambers. I think I need to commend the Labour group for actually bringing this item to committee. And it must have been a very hard thing for them to do, given that they've only been in government for three months and already they're criticising actions of the government. But it's, I'm pleased that they've recognised that scrapping the winter fuel payment was a bad decision. But I think the SNP government are as culpable because if they really wanted to and put their mind to it, they could have continued with it. They could have, as Bailey McPherson has said, readjusted their budget proposals to allow a payment to be made. You know, in the 14 years of the Conservative government, fuel poverty was debated here and austerity was debated here. But during all those years, the Conservative government did not cut the winter fuel payment. And in fact, last year, they actually paid an additional £300 to pensioners on top of the winter fuel payment and also £900 to low-income households. But I think something that made it even more galling for pensioners to take when this cut was announced, when it was revealed in the papers that the Chancellor herself has made a claim for £3,700 for the last four years for heating her own home. And Labour MPs over the last four years have claimed £425,000 in expenses, taxpayers' money, for heating their homes. And while it's fine that we're criticising parties here, I think the most important thing to come out of this is what we've already discussed earlier in the meeting, convener, that every possible effort is made to make sure that pensioners get all the help they can and maximise the benefits available to them.
Thank you, Billy Scott. Billy Sawyers, please.
Yes, thank you, convener. Those who know me well know I'm not really renowned for being a consensus politician. But tonight I will join with those who welcome the fact that Labour have brought this motion forward. I think it probably tells a story in how they were received on the doorsteps in the two recent by-elections as to the feeling of the needs to bring this forward themselves. I've been about elected politics for a long, long time. And I have to say, this isn't taken in isolation because I remember in 1997, when Labour were elected after 18 years of Conservative rule, that one of the first things, one of the first measures they brought forward was pushing through cuts to benefits for single parents. And I really, I do believe the members on this side of the chamber did believe, you know, this election was going to be about change. And probably those who were around in 1997, things can only get better. But there seems something built into the Labour psyche that they feel thwarted by the sort of right-wing press across the UK that we have to be seen to be tough. And it's not tough against tax evasion. It's not tough against millionaires and bankers' bonuses. It's tough against pensioners and tough against single parents. And, you know, sometimes I just wonder how much is it going to take for some of the folk here, because I know our good folk who want to stand up for their constituents, to say enough is enough. But I'll leave that there. What I would say is I really do look forward when the budget in the Scottish Parliament comes forward. I am so looking forward to the Lib Dems and the Conservatives amending that budget to include funding for the winter fuel payment. Now, I'm not going to hold my breath waiting for it to happen, but here's the representative saying that should be done. Well, let's come back at the beginning of December, convener. And maybe we need another motion just to see what's actually happened and who did what. Because the Scottish government can't enact a policy if they don't have the money to do it. And that's the bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy Sawyers. And again, you touched certain points, which brings a bit of amusement to some, I see, in the chamber, or virtual chamber. Councillor Hunter, please.
Yes, thank you, convener. First of all, I am going to start on a note of consensus and actually give a bit of credit to the Labour group for their motion tonight. Because when I first heard that they were going to be bringing forward a motion, I was expecting a similar motion to the one that the Scottish Labour Party took to the parliament, which they couldn't even get a number of their own MSPs to support. So I think credit to the Labour group that they actually have followed suit and have actually brought forward a amendment, which I think, a motion, sorry, which I do think it shows the strength of feeling that we all heard on the doors when we were out campaigning over the last couple of months. But, you know, the comments from first Billy McPherson and then Billy Scott, I think we need to take notice of. Because this seems to be a parting amongst unionist politicians of all stripes, particularly in Scottish Parliament. The idea that what we should be doing is going out there and mitigating every bad decision by the Westminster government. And it's a quick reminder that the Labour Party devolved the powers to the Scottish Parliament and immediately took away the money at the same time so we couldn't actually implement it. So I think that is worth recognising. And it's also worth recognising that at the weekend, it was confirmed that the Scottish block grant since 2020 has gone down by, in terms of about £6.4 billion in real terms, a part of about 12.7%. So we need to recognise that the Scottish Parliament isn't there just to continually mitigate bad Westminster policies. And we can't keep bringing money out of nowhere to pay for that. Later on on the agenda, we'll be discussing the finances for local government. And surely, and I think it's worse tonight or at some point, predictably, we'll be asked to write to the Scottish government to ask for more money for local government, which I think we would all support. But at the same time, we're being asked to make cuts from other budgets to mitigate Westminster decisions. This just can't keep continuing. We can't keep having our block grant effectively cut by Westminster. We can't be asked to mitigate bad Westminster decisions, whether it's Labour bad decisions or Tory bad decisions. And in fact, let's not forget, right back at the start of this, it was Tory Lib Dem decisions that started austerity. So there's a lot of blame that goes around here and nobody's got clean hands. We should remember that as well. So I would support the amendment tonight. I think it's a bit shameful for some of our local MSPs to have not supported the communities that clearly have made their voices heard over the last few weeks. So I will support the amendment tonight.
Thank you, councillor Hunter. Unusual, but I'll let you come back into it. Sorry, she has just to clarify. Seems I'm getting a kick in some of this chat, honestly, convener. And you were right there, not me.
It's just that seconds, Bailey McPherson mentioned he was surprised Labour are using the support to challenge their own government, just to reassure Bailey McPherson we're reusing all internal measures in the party as well and we'll use the council because we think it's wrong. So it would be foolish not to use the council as a mechanism as well.
Thank you for that clarity. Probably comes no surprise that everyone now will be supporting the amendment. And I think it's been, some of the points have been noted here. It'd be interesting to see if you continue your good work in actually trying to turn over your policies or Westminster policies and maybe look at the two child cap or the bed rent tax, which the bed rent tax we mitigate in Scotland. And it sounds like you're still wanting us, not necessarily, but Labour, sorry, the Lib Dems want us to mitigate even another £738 million. I think the budget's a really challenging. I think councillor Hunter made a very good point. He's asking, the first to ask us to write to the Scottish government, asking for more money. And I think I'd love to see, you seem to know more about the budget on Wednesday than I do. I hope the money does flow to the local authorities and I do hope that we get more money. But I'll hold you to that. I know you might want to come back to the chamber and maybe just say other things and go from there. But no, I think it's a serious topic and I think it's recognised in the chamber. It's a very serious topic affecting the elderly and the vulnerable people in the city and across the country and talking about the UK in a sense as well. So I think I'll come back to you, Bailey Keenan, for summing up, if you wish.
Okay. Firstly, I was looking for ways to try to support your motion and for consensus across the chambers. But, you know, I realised when I'd done it that it was in for the kick-me-harder session. But I certainly couldn't have kicked myself hard enough to say, let's congratulate the Scottish government. Because you were obviously looking at papers that are here in front of us tonight. And at the end of that, there was a closure of a school and four community facilities. There's £15 million worth of cuts coming in, we're direction as a council. And that's obviously related to the monies that were received directly from the Scottish government. There's also another one, there's about £4.3 million worth of money that we're unsure will be able to retain based on teacher numbers that's mentioned in the report on revenue monitor. And obviously the IGB and other areas across Scotland are continually overspent. We've got a government that kind of squanders money, but fully got to look at the ferries, where the islands haven't served us by any kind of ferry and the bill keeps going up for the rest of the world that happens. So I kind of can kind of possibly bring myself to congratulate the Scottish government for anything that's done. Because if anything is done, it's squandered money and made life difficult for everyone else. So I'm prepared to go for the vote. I did put it up in good faith. So I'm prepared to go for the vote. So let's have it.
Thank you for that. I just want to clarify on tonight's comments. There is no closure being decided tonight on any school and there's no closure of any community facilities. It's consultations. That's what was put forward tonight, not closures. And we're quite happy to put that forward as consultations because that's the policy of the council going forward with regards. And that's what we're putting forward. There's no point in being over. There has nothing to do with closures. And you're just putting the wrong information out into the public realm. Can we just go to the vote, please, William?
Okay, thank you, convener. The motion by Bailey Keenan, seconded by councillor Shears, is as circulated. The amendment by councillor Tolland, seconded by councillor Mills, is also as circulated. Convener.
Amendment.
Councillor Anderson.
Amendment.
Councillor Black.
Amendment.
Deputy Lord Provost Cardell.
Amendment.
Billy Dawson.
The amendment.
Councillor Hunter.
Amendment.
Councillor Lynn.
Amendment.
Councillor Mills.
Amendment.
Councillor Ruff.
Amendment.
Billy Sawyers.
Amendment.
Councillor Short.
The amendment, please.
Councillor Smith.
The amendment.
Councillor Tolland.
Amendment.
Bailey Keenan.
Motion.
Councillor Crickshank.
Motion.
Councillor Finnegan.
Motion.
Councillor McKeer.
Motion.
Councillor McCurran.
Motion.
Councillor Scullen.
Motion.
Councillor Shears.
Motion.
Billy Wright.
Motion.
Billy McPherson.
The motion.
Councillor Coleman.
Motion.
Councillor Creighton.
The motion.
Councillor Duncan.
Motion.
Billy Scott.
Motion.
That gives you 13 for the motion and 13 for the amendment. You have the casting vote, convener. Thank you for the voted by amendment. And I'm equally advised that the convener's taken the opportunity to reorder the agenda. I would now like to move on to item seven, which is the response to external auditors' annual audit report to members. This is for noting.
Second, any questions or comments? I don't see any, so I'll take that as agreed.
Yes, thank you. As indicated, the agenda's been reordered. It now takes you on to item nine to the Interventions Drive Board Performance Association Planning Developments, which is also for noting.
Thank you. Councillor Creighton, please.
Thank you, convener. The information about life expectancy in the city on page 113 is both stark and worrying. As Dundee having this... Sorry, convener, did you interrupt?
Sorry, I couldn't hear you. It felt so faint.
I'll just start again. My question is, the information about life expectancy in the city on page 113 is both stark and worrying, with Dundee having the second... stark and worrying, with Dundee having the second lowest life expectancy in Scotland, and the direction of travel over the past decade heading in exactly the wrong direction. Can officers give the committee some assurances about the steps Dundee Health and Social Care Partnership and the public sector more widely is taking to try and turn this around?
Thank you. Pass it, Dave.
Excuse me, sir. Yeah, in terms of the life expectancy, all the integration joint boards strategic priorities that are aligned, they're trying to improve on that. So if you look at the priorities that are set in the plan, it's all around early intervention, prevention, and tackling the health inequalities that exist within the city. And we continue to work with all our partners from the local authority and the NHS board to kind of look at ways of improving that kind of life expectancy figure. Given the impact of COVID and cost of living crisis etcetera, that has made that challenge even more difficult, but through a range of actions that were set within the delivery plan, that's exactly what we're looking to try and achieve in terms of improving that position.
Thank you. Is that your question, councillor Cane?
Yeah, I appreciate the answer. Us as a group will await response and actions, but thank you.
Thank you for that. Councillor Finnegan, please.
Thank you. My question is regarding page 122 of the plan, valuing the workforce. I would like to ask, the Scottish Government introduced the reduction in working week to improve staff health and wellbeing. Normally, if you reduce the working week, you need to increase the amount of staff to cover the work that's getting done. However, for one service, one community nursing adult service, the reduction in working week equates to losing 228 hours of nursing care within one four-week roster, which equates to six full-time equivalents. So for projection for year two, that'll be 12 full-time equivalents, in year three, 18 full-time equivalents lost just through the reduction of the working week. That's band three nurses, healthcare support workers, band fives and band sixes. If you include band sevens and band eights, that equates to 0.8 of a full-time equivalent, and that is four working days per roster. So I'd like to ask, what strategies have been implemented to mitigate the impact of reduced working week on both service provision and employee wellbeing? And can the committee be assured that the patients or clients will receive the necessary care when required despite the changes in working week? Because if that's one service, I'm sure that it's replicated throughout all the nursing services within the partnership.
Good question, Dave.
Right, so, yeah, no, thanks for the question. I think it's probably fair to say that the reduction in the working week has presented a number of challenges in terms of service delivery, given the implications that councillor Finnegan has just set out. And we do have the workforce plan within the Health and Social Care Partnership that we continue to work to, and to make sure that we have all the staffing in place that is required. The reason for that, the introduction of the reduction in working week was around employee welfare and support. So from that perspective, it does provide those members of staff with some additional time for themselves. And however, we do continue to review service delivery to make sure that there are no direct service implications of the changes.
Thank you. Councillor Finnegan? Okay.
That'll do for just now.
Okay, thank you. I see no further questions or comments, so we'll just take that as agreed. Over to you, Willie, please.
Actually, take you on to item 10, budget strategy and financial outlook. You'd ask you the recommendations.
Before I present to the members the medium-term financial projections, it recommends a strategy to address projected budget shortfall for 2526. Got a second, see if there's any comments. See no questions or comments, so we'll take that as agreed. Thank you.
Take you on to item 11, community regeneration fund. You'd ask you the proposals.
Pass it over to my hand. All right, this supports, this supports six member approval to establish a neighborhood capital funding to increase the number and diversity of citizen participation in the decision-making processes. I see councillor Duncan has a question.
Yeah, thanks, convener. Yeah, question and observation, I suppose, as well. I mean, I fully understand why the weighting and funding will be targeted using the data zones with 15% most deprived households. So I think we all get that, but to give nothing at all to Brody Ferry in the West End is disappointing, as it rather implies that there's no households in either of these wards in poverty, which is not the case. So can I ask officers if any consideration has been given to perhaps making some sort of funding allocation, even if it's only a modest one, to be focused only on tackling poverty and social exclusion in these wards?
Thank you. Pass it over to Mr Boyle.
Thanks, convener. Thanks, councillor Duncan. Yeah, the new Neighbourhood Regeneration Fund falls and uses the same template of funding that was previously the Community Regeneration Fund. And when you look at 4.33, the report, it reminds members that the figures of intended allocation are calculated based on the number of citizens in each ward who live in the 15% most deprived of data zones, in terms of Scottish index of multiple deprivation. So therefore, the funding has got to be directed at those communities and neighborhoods who face the greatest inequalities in terms of experiencing socioeconomic disadvantage, and this is us following quite closely the provisions of the Community Empowerment Scotland Act 2015.
Thank you, Mr Duncan. Are you okay with that question?
Well, yes and no. I mean, I do understand the reasoning behind it, but it seems rather harsh to some of the poverty-stricken people that I know do exist in my ward and doubtless in the West End, to be left behind, as it were.
I think just a reminder, everyone, this came from the budget proposal this year, we were actually looking to reconfigure the capital spend and the regeneration funding, and the model was using the same amount of funding for the same model for the localities. I see councillor McKervin, please.
Thanks, Chair. Question on the allocation, it mentions the budget 2425, money zero roll into the 2526 budget in exercise, so for example, coal side, £62,600. How much of that allocation is 2425?
Sorry, is that your direct question?
Bonnie, can you answer that?
Yeah, thanks, convener. Thanks, councillor McKervin. The entirety of that, £62,600, is this year's allocation.
So in effect, 2526 is this financial year's?
That was 2425. You asked the question for.
So that you'd asked what that allocation is asked for this current year?
Yeah.
And when we come to 2526, we'll come to that.
Be the same.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'll be the budget proposal for next financial year, yeah. I don't see any further questions or comments, so we'll take that as agreed. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, convener. Take you on to item 13, contracts for Dundee Schools Music Theatre, sound and lighting. You'd ask to give recommendations.
Terms of us to agree, the recommendation's before us. See any questions? George? See anybody else to turn again? Don't see any question or comments, so we'll take that as agreed. Thank you.
Item 40, before we use the customer services platform report, you'd ask you the recommendations.
Again, the committee's asked to put the recommendations before us. Let's see, any questions or comments? We'll take that as agreed. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, convener. Understand from earlier discussion in the meeting that there was a suggestion there that we would have discussion in confidential items of the agenda. On that basis, I'd like to advise the committee that it's time that a deputation request has been received to address committee for one of those reports in the confidential section, as a committee minded to hear the deputation.
Can we just confirm all the public, in a way?
Deputation.
No. Deputations are actually online, but can we just be sure there's no public for that?
We're going to kind of simply confirm at this stage that with the committee's agreement, since we've moved into private session, we will terminate the live stream.
Thank you for that.